In the beginning.
Thank you. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, November 3rd. I now call this meeting to order. And we're gonna have to pause for one minute. We're missing someone. How did I not notice that? Sorry about that, folks. Hold, please.
In the interim, we can say, welcome, everyone. Thank you for spending your Monday night with us.
There he is. All right, we'll try that again. Welcome to this City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, November 3rd. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're excited to be here in person and have all of you here tonight, but we have options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the deputy clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in by phone, press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment for each period for each specific item. To start off, we have our ceremonial items today.
Sorry, we need to do roll call.
I did that again. Second meeting. Okay, we'll go ahead and call roll, please.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Here.
Councilmembers, here. Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
Mayor Newsom?
Here.
Thank you.
Our first agenda item is a ceremonial one. It's the 50th anniversary of the San Mateo Garden Center proclamation. I invite to the podium Mike Drilling, along with the San Mateo Garden Center people.
Come on up.
Mike, we invite you to say a few words, and then I will present you with a proclamation. Please.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Newsom, and the City Council. I'm sorry, into the microphone. So I face you instead of the audience. All right, fair enough.
They'll see on the screen behind us.
There you go. There you go. All right. The San Mateo Garden Center was founded 50 years ago to promote gardening and civic beautification. We, in addition, provide a home for garden, arts, and craft clubs to engage their passions with the community, and is our intention to continue that commitment. In addition, though, we become an affordable provider of a lovely space for families to hold major life events like weddings, birthdays, and memorials, and we're committed to continuing that as well. Looking forward, we hope that our successors will gather 50 years hence to celebrate the 100th year of the San Mateo Garden Center's service to the residents of San Mateo and Sarani communities. Thank you very much.
And with that, I will read a proclamation. Whereas since 1975, the San Mateo Garden Center's Members Club, Volunteers, and Friends have nurtured both plants and people, teaching sustainable gardening, supporting local beautification, and creating a living connection between nature and community. And whereas through classes, plant shows, youth programs, and volunteer activities, the San Mateo Garden Center has inspired generations to connect with nature and contribute to greener, healthier community. And whereas, the original center, composed of the main meeting room with a kitchen and small offices, and years later, a second building was added to include a small meeting room and garden shop. And whereas, the San Mateo Garden Center houses a beautiful rose garden devoted solely to roses. And whereas, the San Mateo Garden Center promotes interest and knowledge of horticulture, gardening, conservation, and the many more benefits. And whereas, leadership and support continue to come from local groups and individuals who appreciate the value of this facility. And whereas, this marks the center's 50th anniversary, a milestone honoring decades of partnership between the city of San Mateo and the dedicated volunteers, members, and supporters who've sustained this valued community resource. Now, therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby appreciate the beauty and connections the San Mateo Garden Center brings to the community, and we recognize the accomplishment of the San Mateo Garden Center's 50th anniversary today with this proclamation. Congratulations.
Now we're all gonna take a picture.
Before we go to our next item, just wanted to let you all know two things. One, if you're sitting down and you have a space next to you, please raise your hand. Okay, so you can come and sit down if you'd like. We also have our conference room just across the hall here opened for overflow seating. So if you don't want to stand, please have a seat or sit in the overflow room. Thanks. Next, we will have a proclamation, United Against Health. Against Hate, thanks. United Against Health? Okay, I would like to invite Jose Garcia, the Chair of the City of San Mateo's DEI Committee. I'll get it right. Please come and join us at the podium.
For a second, I was a little confused. I was all...
I know. I lost you for a minute. I'm sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. My name is Jose Garcia. I'm a management analyst with the City Manager's Office here at the city of San Mateo and Chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. I'm joined here with Sharice Roldan from the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department, who is also a member of the DEI Committee. On behalf of the committee, we would like to thank the mayor and City Council for recognizing United Against Hate Week and for your continued support in bringing our community together. This week reminds us that kindness, understanding, and respect are what makes San Mateo such a special place to live. Since first joining the movement, San Mateo has shown that when we stand together, we can build a city where everyone feels welcome and valued. I encourage everyone to take part, attend a local event, reach out to your neighbors. Small acts of connection and compassion make a big difference. Thank you to our city leaders and to everyone here tonight for helping San Mateo stay united, inclusive, and strong. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now read a proclamation. We, I will now read a proclamation. Well, maybe I need someone else to. I'm pretty tongue-tied apparently. Okay, proclamation. Whereas the city of San Mateo is a community that respects diversity and affirms our commitment to safety and belonging for all residents, and whereas hate presents a threat to communities everywhere and creates an atmosphere of fear and division. And whereas, the city of San Mateo affirms the right and the value of all residents, regardless of race, ethnicity, disability, gender, identity, sexual orientation, religion, socioeconomic status, immigration status, or country of birth. And whereas, the city of San Mateo is dedicated to preventing and opposing hate and intolerance in our community and rejects efforts to divide, exclude, or marginalize individuals, families, or communities. And whereas, education, compassion, critical thinking, and cooperation are keys to unlocking, understanding, embracing differences between people. And whereas, we seek to join other communities and citities across the county in this annual United Against Hate Week. It is an important step in bridging divisions while strengthening and healing our community. Now, therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby designate the week of October 19th through the 25th as United Against Hate. Congratulations. Our final ceremonial item tonight is World Town Planning Day, a proclamation. I invite Zach Dahl, our Community Development Director, to come up to the podium.
Give you the opportunity to say a few words. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I would like to invite up the rest of San Mateo's planning team to come join me here at the podium in accepting this. The city of San Mateo has an excellent planning team that really focuses on so many different aspects that it's really exciting to get to recognize here this evening. Whether it's planning for the future with documents like General Plan 2040, engaging with the community, doing robust outreach and engagement, facilitating projects that meet local codes and state laws, and walking that line as we carry different projects, big and small, policy efforts, and all the other pieces to ensure that San Mateo is a community that grows, changes, and evolves in line with community expectations. And so it's exciting to get to recognize our team, led by Sun Kwan, Deputy Director, and Joanna Winter, our Planning Manager, and all the other planners here that work tirelessly into the evenings and on weekends when needed to make sure that we get the best projects we can and we get the best policies we can to really serve the needs of the city. So we appreciate you recognizing World Town Planning Day and the work that city planners do in a community.
I echo his thanks to all of you, and thank you all for coming out tonight. And with that, I will read a proclamation. Hopefully, I'll get through this one. Whereas, San Mateo has committed through its general plan, strives San Mateo to growing and developing its built environment in ways that bring diversity, balance, inclusivity, prosperity, and resiliency to the community. And whereas, city planning is often unrecognized but a powerful process that can translate these values and commitments into actionable policy, public investments, and regulations that shape how the community evolves. And whereas, city planners use diverse sets of tools, skills, and practices to support housing production and affordability, create jobs and community wealth, improve public health, preserve beloved places, adapt to changing climate, improve quality of life, and bring neighbors together. And whereas, the planning profession has evolved to recognize and address the inequities of the past practices, embracing a commitment to equity, inclusion, and meaningful community partnership to ensure that planning truly serves the public good. And whereas, San Mateo planners work to engage with community stakeholders, respond to dynamic political, economic, and environmental conditions, ensure that all residents have fair access to shaping important public decisions, comply with changing state laws, and facilitate the development of housing, jobs, shops, restaurants, and great public practices. And whereas, the city of, city planning initiatives are one of the easiest ways for San Mateo residents to get involved in helping create a future for San Mateo that they want to see, including involving the children and youth who also will inherit that future. And whereas, World Town Planning Day was first celebrated in 1949 as an international effort to recognize and promote the way that planning and planners contribute to communities that are healthy, safe, just, prosperous, resilient, and beautiful. Now, therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim November 3rd, 2025, as World Town Planning Day in the city of San Mateo. And I encourage San Mateo residents and community organizations to actively participate in helping shape the vibrant future of their city. Thank you. Congratulations.
We're gonna take a photo.
Congratulations.
That's all right. You developers love your big words. Thank you so much.
We're now moving on to the ceremony, beyond the cer... Oh, sorry. We're now moving on beyond the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting, which includes the business items being considered by the council. For that reason, I would like to remind all in the room and online that we'll be enforcing our rules of decorum. As such, we do not allow for cheering, jeering, or booing during the business portion of the meeting as this tends to put a chill on public comment. Our goal is to ensure that all perspectives are heard. Our motto is to give respect, get respect, and we appreciate your cooperation for this. So before I have the deputy clerk read the consent calendar just one more time, if you want seats, there's still some available here. There's also seating in the overflow. Okay, and with that, would the deputy city clerk please read the consent calendar?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, 2024-2025 sanitary sewer roof foaming South Basin Agreement. Item number five, decommission plant processes cleaning project agreement. Item number six, digital analyst software agreement. Item number seven, grant award acceptance and budget appropriation agreement. Item number eight, independent audit services amendment. Item number nine, 2025 triennial building code update ordinance adoption. Item number 10, establish the civic arts committee as a standing commission ordinance adoption. Item number 11, human resources and finance department request for additional positions approval. Item number 12, city council meeting minutes approval.
I'm wondering if I, Mr. City Manager, could I get some guidance on how to amend the agenda? Is that part of this action item? No.
So right now, the action is just the items on consent, and that's items four through 12. We can discuss that after action is taken on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, if, if any members in the pub, the public, who would wish to comment on a consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is public comment for consent calendar items only. Miss Deputy Clerk, do we have any takers?
I don't see any public comment in person. If you are, if you wish to speak on the consent item, please raise your hand now in our virtual environment. Okay.
Okay, we have no public comment for consent calendar items. Is there a motion from a fellow council member?
Aye.
We have a first, and we have a second. Deputy Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Can I just verify who seconded the motion?
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Thank you. Councilmembers, here. Yes. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is general public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to for staff for follow-up. The public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, this is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Before we total the number of general public comments, I think my council member has a request of the city manager.
Yes, I was wondering if we could please, because we have such a robust agenda today with the Hillsdale item, I was wondering if we could move the two items under new business to the next council meeting.
So I think that's up for the council colleagues to weigh in on. Would you like to reschedule the items 14 and 15? That's the Economic Development Work Plan.
I'd like to second Nicole's proposal.
Deputy Mayor?
I, I am not opposed. I'm just thinking about how I think we have a number of items next time, too. So it'll just be a long night next time. Okay.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
I'm supportive. Maybe what we could do is obviously give this item as much attention as it needs and then see what time it is, and maybe there might be time for the City Council Priority List Progress Report. If not, then, then we could move them both. I definitely think the economic development plan should be moved, though.
I'm okay with that.
All right, let's do that. Let's move the economic development to the future meeting, and we'll re-quorum the council to see where we are with item 15. Is that allowed? Okay, perfect. All right, now we're gonna open it up to general public comment. So this is comments that are things that are not on the agenda. Deputy City Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment items only?
Certainly, Mayor. If you wish to speak on general public comment and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you join us in person, please provide me with your request to speak form. We'll now be closing the request to speak period, and I see three hands raised in our virtual environment. Per rules and procedures, that is three minutes per speaker.
Okay. Also, let's clarify that that is, these are for general public comment.
Yes, general public comment. It went down to two. It went back to three. Okay, I will stick with three. And our last speaker will be Ciara A. You will be our last speaker.
Thank you.
All right, three minutes in the clock. Our first speaker will be Tassos Ografos.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For over eight years, residents along West Santaynez Avenue have been asking the city to address what we all see and experience daily, vehicles traveling at excessive and unsafe speeds. After years of requests, the city finally conducted a traffic study, and that study confirmed that residents have long, would have long known speed reduction measures are warranted on West Santaynez Avenue. However, the city then coordinated, conditioned any improvements on a resident survey that required more than 50% of all households to respond, and of those, a majority to approve the measures. We were later told that fewer than 50% responded, and therefore, the city would take no action. The problem is that many residents have stated they never received the survey. Some even wrote directly to city staff to report they were left out. The flawed or incomplete outreach process should not be the reason the city fails to act on a documented safety problem. We urge the City Council to direct staff to revisit the process, verify that outreach was done properly, and if necessary, reissue the survey or move forward with traffic calming measures that the city's own data already supports. The goal here is simple, to make West Santaynez Avenue safe for everyone, for drivers, pedestrians, and children. Thank you for your attention to this important neighborhood safety issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Swire.
Yes, hi, Mayor Newsom and members of the council. Thanks for listening again. I wanted to speak again on the bike lanes on Humboldt, which pass by two of our biggest schools and has been labeled as the most dangerous street in, on city property. I attended the community meeting earlier, I think it was about a week ago, and at one point, public work staff said that there was concern in the education community about the parking impacts. I just wanted to clarify that the education community has been pretty much unified in supporting safer streets for students as opposed to free car storage on streets. The entire school board for the Foster City San Mateo School District has endorsed the bike lanes. The PTOs of over a dozen elementary schools have supported the bike lanes. San Mateo High School's class, school president and its green team have supported the bike lanes for safety. The president of the San Mateo Adult School has supported the bike lanes for safety. So it's pretty much unified there, and I'm disappointed that the city represented this as otherwise. There was also a post about traffic cones blocking parking spaces in North Central. Again, this is the second time in about two months. I contacted the city to understand what's the process for responding to those and was informed by the PD that it seemed like there was some ambiguity in terms of who actually deals with that and whether or not fines are issued in those cases. It seems to me that the city is not doing everything it can to ensure that residents are not abusing their parking privileges on the public right of way. So I think that's something that could be looked into before we spend $3 million to add more parking. And finally, at the community meeting, there was a statement made that... And finally, at the community meeting, there was a statement made that we cannot remove any parking on Fremont and Idaho, the two streets that are considered as alternatives. As you know, a four-year-old child was killed in Burlingame recently because there was inadequate visibility on the city street for a drop vehicle exiting a driveway. That is going to happen again if you do not remove parking on Fremont and Idaho and divert bike traffic to those streets. So that's just a problem waiting to happen. That's all I have. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Our next and last speaker is Ciara A. Hi, Ciara, can you hear us?
Yes, sorry. Thank you so much. I just have one question, and I'm wondering if I'm able to comment on the Hillsdale Mall redevelopment application, or if that's something completely different.
This is for our next item. The current time period is for general public comment.
Oh, okay. There is one thing I would like to address, and it's not as serious as some of the other things, but it is a, a small issue regarding the, the street lights, the stop signs. For example, on E25th Avenue, the, the street signs, they only go for about a couple seconds while the other ones are, they go on for about longer. And it kind of creates this little problem where we have to wait for a longer time while the other lanes are going, um, a little bit more often. And I've just been noticing this a lot when I'm, when I'm biking around where some, some stop signs are, they don't, they don't give you full time to cross the street. Like, I'll be in the middle of the street and it'll, it'll immediately turn yellow and then go to red. And it just kind of worries me for the safety of, of other drivers and bikers trying to cross safely without having to speed it up. That's just my only concern. Sorry, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, we will now close general public comment, and we will move on to our next item of business. Item number 13, the Hillsdale Mall redevelopment application informational. We'll have a presentation from Elaine Ling, the principal planner.
Good evening, city council and members of the public. This is Elaine Ling, principal planner and project planner for this application. The item before you tonight is Hillsdale Mall redevelopment, a 32-acre mixed-use housing development project. Before dive deep into this application, staff want to introduce the background and timeline for this project. On February 6th, the applicant submitted a preliminary application for a housing development project under Housing Accountability Act, known as HAA, and Housing Crisis Act, known for SB 330. Under the state law, illegible housing development project secures ordinance regulations requirement and even impact fees at the time when a preliminary application was deemed complete. On March 20th, with the middle of additional information pursuant to the city's preliminary application checklist, the preliminary application was deemed complete of, of the same day. On June 20th, the applicant submitted the formal application for the first time of review. Together with the first round of submitter, the applicant requested tonight's study session. This informational study session does not count into the five maximum public hearing a housing development project can have under the state law. Following the formal application submitter, on July 21st, staff issued the first incomplete letter based on the city's planning application checklist for non-single-family projects. On October 17th, the applicant submitted second round of submitter. Staff from all departments are currently reviewing this application with a comment letter due on November 17th. Staff want to bring to city council's attention that, following the preliminary applications submitter, both the city as well as applicant reach out to Department of Housing and Community Development, which is also known for HCD, on the eligibility for the project for a housing development project. On August 12th, HCD issued a technical assistance letter conforming the project as a housing development project, which should be reviewed and processed under HAA and SB 330. With that, staff want to go into the background of this application. The proposed project site include Hillsdale Shopping Center South Block bounded by 31st Avenue to the north, Alcaminorial to the west, Laurel Creek to the south, and Edison Street to the west. The project site also included a standalone surface parking lot behind past marked commercial buildings along 36th Avenue. The existing 12-acre North Block will remain as is. The entirety of the project site is located within half a mile of major transit stops as identified in the dash white radius line. Therefore, the entire project is stamped from parking requirement under AB 2097. In other words, the city cannot impose any minimum parking requirement for any future commercial or residential development. The proposed site is also on the city's six-cycle housing element priority site with a potential capacity for 1,200 housing units development. The proposed application include demolition of the existing Hillsdale Mall South Block as well as its associated parking structures, as well as three standalone commercial buildings, Barnes &amp; Noble, Trader Jewels, and Wells Fargo Banks. The surrounding land use include commercial development along Alcaminorial, as well as single-family and multifamily residential development to the west and the south of the project site. Across the street from Alcaminorial and the railroad tracks, there's Bay Meadow specific development area, which included office, residential, retail, and other mixed-use development. The general plan policy identified the proposed site has a land use designation of mixed-use high as identified in the dark blue area along Alcaminorial, and mixed-use median two for the rest of the site in the light blue area of the slide. Mixed-use high land use designation allows for residential density between 100 to 130 units per acre and FAR up to 4.5. Mixed-use median two allows the density between 50 to 99 units per acre with FAR up to 4.0. The zoning designation is C2-2 slash Q5. Q5 refers to Hillsdale Shopping Center overlaying district. Conceptually, the project is organized into four distinctive land use zones. As shown on the diagram at the upper corner, upper left corner of the slides, there is a office commercial zone along Alcaminorial, a retail core as a northern portion of the site connecting to existing Hillsdale Shopping Center North Block. The residential components located on the western portion of the site along Edison Streets, and there's a flexible zone in between commercial, retail, and residential zones, which could be developed for residential or commercial zone in the future. Specifically, there are four blocks along Alcaminorial to be developed for high-rise office buildings ranging from nine to 10 stories. The retail components located in the two central blocks, which included a component of standalone retail, as well as ground-level retail component underneath residential buildings. The residential building included five-to-eight-story multifamily apartment buildings at the middle of the site, as well as three-to-five-story multifamily building and three-story townhomes along Edison Street on the western edge of the site, which create a transition to the surrounding single-family neighborhoods. The applicant did not include a detailed land use breakdown data for each blocks. Staff identify a comparison for the overall commercial and residential floor area as identified in the table on the slides. This comparison is between the preliminary application and then two formal application submitters. It's worth noting to the city council that the submitted master development plan include a much broader range as identified in the text underneath the table. The density bonus letter provided in the second submitter identified 14% for the total housing units will be designated for lower-income household. To be specific, 15% of the for rent housing units will be dedicated for lower-income household, and 15% of the for sale units will be dedicated for lower, for moderate-income The proposed projects will be subject to state laws and the local plans and codes as outlined on the current slides. Staff will currently review the application to make sure the project will be consistent with all the state laws and the local plans and codes within the statutory review deadlines. Staff want to bring to city council attention about two state laws, which, which are Housing Accountability Act, which known for HAA, and Housing Crisis Act, which is known for SB 330. Both of the state law are recently amended last year, which went effective on January 1st, 2025. Together, the two laws set up substantive procedural and significant protection to housing development project. Specifically, both state law apply to housing development projects. The definition of the housing development project was significantly amended last year, which went effective on January 1st, 2025. The newly amended definition include a new category under mixed-use housing development projects, which refers to a minimal of 50%, of a nine-new floor area will be dedicated for residential uses, and then the project include a minimum of 500 units. HCD confirms that based on this definition, this new definition, Hillsdale Mall redevelopment project will be qualified as a housing development project, thereby subject to Housing Accountability Act and SB 330. Under this state law, the project expected to be deemed complete within three cycles of the review. The city can only require objective, quantifiable, and written standards to the application. The city cannot deny or conditionally approve the project but render the housing development project even feasible to be built unless the city identify a specific adverse impact on public health and safety. Thereby, the city council's discretionary authority is significantly limited. In the past, adoption of specific plan or master plan will be a typical procedure for this type of application of the scale and sizes. However, that past procedure will be a legislative update through discretionary review, allowing planning commission, the city council impose conditions and requirements based on communities' needs and applicable city plans and policies. This process is no longer applicable to the proposed housing development project. Based on that context, staff develop a list of high-priority issues, which will be introduced after this slide. The first priority issue is regarding the project timeline and the facing plan. The formal application does not include a detailed facing and timeline. Based on the applicant Hillsdale Reimagined website, the proposed project will likely to occur within the next 20 years. However, more detail is needed for analysis. This piece of information is not submitted as part of the formal application. Absent of a detailed facing timeline create uncertainty given the project size and extended duration. Key technical factors such as utility capacity analysis, water supply analysis, and traffic analysis also depend on this detailed facing and timeline information. Staff is currently working with HCD and applicant to make sure that entire project will be reviewed and processed in compliance with the state law and the local regulations. In summary, staff support the delivery of the housing components concurrently and proportionally with the non-residential components. The project subject to really tight review procedures. As mentioned before, the application will be deemed, would be expected to deem complete within three cycle review. Based on that information, the project's likely to be deemed complete March 2026. Following the completion of the project, staff have up to 60 days to generate a comprehensive list for all inconsistency comments based on the city's general plan and other plan policies. The applicant is, is responsible to address all the inconsistency comments while the Sequo documentation is being prepared. At the conclusion of the Sequo documentation preparation, staff will schedule public hearing for the project to be approved. The second issue is regarding the loss of regional shopping center. Hillsdale Station area plan identified the proposed site to be a regional retail and employment center. As mentioned previously, this policy usually is implemented through a discretionary process, which is no longer applicable to the current housing development project. City staff is currently engaging a economic consultant and a retail consultant to comprehensively evaluate the project and identify the potential impact on the city's retail activity as well as on the city's revenues. In addition, there will be up to 1,670 new housing unit introduced by this project. A significant community-serving retail and the business needs will be required for this application. The proposed ground-level retail is undefiable to support this community needs. Therefore, it will be ideal for the applicant to continuously working with the city staff to provide sufficient retail space to meet the existing and new residents' needs as well as continuously making the site a regional destination. The third issue is regarding a potential pedestrian connection to a rail train station. As mentioned before, the city cannot impose a minimum parking requirement to the projects. Therefore, it is really critical to create a strong connection to the transit staff, which is Hillsdale rail train station. It's not, it not only will increase the feasibility for reduced off-street parking, but also will promote pedestrian safety and activities. The fourth issue is regarding the proposed off-street parking. As discussed previously, this project will be exempt from any parking requirement under state law. However, the project included a substantial amount of ground-level parking rather than maximizing the retail component at the ground level. Therefore, it's really critical for the applicant to work with the city to locate the parking strategically to promote ground-level pedestrian activities and enhance the vitality of the entire project. The fifth issue is regarding the traffic and circulation. Under SB 743, a state law, any project within half a mile of a transit would be considered generate less than significant vehicle miles traveled impact, which is also known for WMT traffic impact. In other words, traffic analysis is streamlined under Sequo. However, the city's general plan 2040 has a policy which required a site-specific traffic analysis. analysis pursuant to the city adopted traffic impact analysis guidelines. Currently, staff is engaging a consultant to prepare a local transportation analysis to comprehensively evaluate the project and identify what kind of improvement will be needed to mitigate the traffic impact. The sixth issue is regarding the architectural design of the projects. Currently, staff is reviewing the application based on the city adopted objective design guidelines. Staff will focus on the design quality for the tallest building along Alcamino Real, the compatibility of the residential design with the surrounding neighborhood, as well as ground-level interfaces in relationship to the public realm. The last issue that staff want to bring to city council attention is environmental review, which is also known for Sequoia review. Currently, the applicant proposed to use 151A3 Sequoia exemption for the application. This exemption allow a project to tier off a program-level EIR under a general plan, community plan, or specific plan, as long as the project is consistent with the plan's policies. The applicant argues that the project falls within the general plan, land use policies, and all the other policies, thereby can be streamlined under general plan EIR, Environmental Impact Report. However, in order to be eligible under this exemption, all the other sequel categories cannot have any potential significant impact which needs further assessment. Staff have identified a few categories that need a further assessment to determine whether this exemption is eligible for the projects. Those category include biological impact to Laurel Creek, noise and vibration impact caused by construction and traffic, air quality impact, water supplies, and the utility capacities. Staff is currently engaging a Sequoia consultant and fully evaluate the project's Sequoia Staff have sent out a public notice to all residents and tenants within 1,000 feet. A total of 2,800 mailing recipients have received this notices. Staff also send off over 200 email subscribers for this application. The meeting notice also published in social media, Citywide, E! News, and the applicant have installed a total of 12 placards on the project site. Following tonight's study session, the applicant will work with the city staff to further revise the application based on the council and the public input, and then staff will process this application following the state law statutory deadlines. With that, staff concludes tonight's presentation and is welcome for any questions.
Thank you for a very thorough presentation. We will now open this topic to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We will begin with a presentation by the applicant.
Yeah, presentation by the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Well, now a presentation by the applicant. I don't think that's on my schedule, but yes, welcome.
Do you want to turn it on, turn the mic on?
Thank you, Elaine, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm David Bohannon, and I'm very excited to have the opportunity to present tonight and have a discussion about Hillsdale Reimagined. I'm joined by many of our talented team members, including our urban designer at Gale, our architect at HOK, civil engineer and landscape architect Kimmy Horn, and land use attorney Hollanda Knight, and our partner, Northwood Investors. And at this time, I would like to invite Andrew Turkoff of Sarus Regis to walk through the project with you, and we look forward to an engaging study session.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and council members, member of the public. I think the presentation is being pulled up right now, but I'm just going to jump into it in the interest of time. To get started, I really want to quickly outline a couple key elements of our proposed plan that that make Hillsdale Reimagined a better version of Hillsdale as it is today. And whenever you get a chance, we can keep on the second slide, it'd be perfect. Thank you. One, one of the goals that we had when we were developing the plan was create an enhanced regional shopping destination. This is really an opportunity to rethink what Hillsdale is today and to enter into the 21st century of retailing, address the desire for retailers to locate on main streets, and to be in places that have a sense of place that it really attracts the best of the best in terms of retailers. Two, create a series of new open spaces. So much of what the mall provides today and what we heard from community feedback is there's a real desire to people that honestly hang out in the atrium of the mall, that hang out in the food court of the mall, that hang out in these third spaces, and a desire and an opportunity to really use new open spaces to create these gathering spaces in the new project. Three, a mix of uses. The site is incredibly well-positioned, and it really can be more than just a mall. A mix of uses builds in a user base of support for the future retailers at this location, and also really makes the environment vibrant and makes it a lively neighborhood throughout the day from morning through evening. Four, new housing. Obviously, it's a housing project. Our recent resumetal proposed approximately 1,400 new homes, and the aim of the project was to place these homes in a context where people would be excited to live and set them up for success. And then finally, inclusion of office space and a diverse use of mix of uses. Not only does this enrich the texture of the site and provide a diverse of users who support the retail, who activate the open spaces, who, you know, walk down the streets, but it also provides San Mateo the opportunity to capture future employment, the future companies that want to locate in this region, and fiscal impact, positive fiscal revenue. Next slide, please. But really what this is, is this is really an evolution of Hillsdale as it's evolved over the past several decades. I'll let you imagine what Hillsdale looked like in the 1950s when it was first built, and then you'll see it evolve over time. This is really a continuation of that stewardship of the property, all in the interest, always and each time that the property has evolved, of addressing communities' needs and of responding to where the market is at that moment in time. We can go ahead and skip to the next one, actually. I'll say many of the people who are in this room tonight behind me, many of you have participated in quite an extensive community engagement process. Just highlighted in pink right here up on the screen is just the, some of the, some of the engagement activities we've done since we submitted our preliminary application in February. Many people had the chance to opine and hear kind of the latest thoughts of the plan. What I want to emphasize tonight, though, is while we are aiming for SB 330 completeness in the coming months, we don't see that as the final product that we, you know, anticipate will be the final version that gets brought before this council in the future to get approved. We see continuing evolution after completeness and continuing continual refinement that happens from input we get here and input from the community more broadly. Next slide, please. So, where are we? Let's get to the project itself. Hillsdale Reimagined, many of you have seen this image, kind of an illustrative illustration of how all of the different concepts actually come together and form this vibrant destination and this regional hub. Next slide, please. But I want to walk you through real quick what the layers are that kind of underpin and created that texture that got to that illustrative plan. So, one, we started with a real mission to create a vibrant regional destination for retail in the site. Increasingly, we hear from retailers that they want a main street-style environment, not the malls of the 20th century. There's about 150,000 square feet of retail programmed in the Hillsdale Reimagined plan right here. Just for a little context and comparison, that plus the 200,000 square feet that exists in the north block and will continue to exist puts the total retail square footage is about 350,000 square feet. That's in the sweet spot of kind of the strongest regional retailers throughout the country. As a local reference point, the ground-floor retail in a place like Santana Row, excluding the big-box stores that surround it, is slightly under that. It's about 335,000 square feet. So this is very much a substantial retail destination. Next slide, please. I want to also emphasize, we've heard community input, we've expressed as many times the importance of a grocer on-site. It's not only an amenity to the residents that already live in the surrounding neighborhood, but it is by far an important amenity also for future residents who will live on the site and future office workers as well. Next slide, please. So I'm going to hearken back to one of the comments I made earlier when I was laying out kind of the principles. Much of what we heard from people was, you know, their attachment to the mall was, we want spaces to hang out, we want those third spaces, spaces where people from the community can come together and really spend time. This series of expanded public realm kind of connects those spaces, it almost builds off of the north block's public plaza, and provides additional outdoor space, additional gathering space that's surrounded by retail, that's active. It's not kind of off in the middle of nowhere, it's really to bring people together. And in fact, one of the key moves we did earlier in the process about a year ago was our original open space was primarily organized around the frontage of Laurel Creek, and we heard feedback from the community, no, bring that to the center, make this the focal point, make this the place where people come after school. As I, the example I always give is to get Bobo tea after high school, or, you know, to meet for lunch, for coffee, for wine, whatever the case may be. This is also, these are the spaces where there's opportunities for community programming, summer concert series, movie nights in the evenings, whatever, there's kind of a, you know, a range of possibilities of what these spaces could really hold. Next slide, please. We've also heard, and we're firm believers of the importance of increasing the comfort and the experience at the 31st and El Camino intersection. And I know there's, you know, many different ways that this can be approached, but I'll just highlight a couple of the ways that we're thinking about it so far. One is bringing the buildings in the frontage close to the street and bringing them towards El Camino. Right now, when you arrive at 31st and El Camino, what are you greeted with? A two-story concrete parking structure that really just says, nope, pedestrians aren't welcome here, nope, cyclists aren't welcome here. So bringing the building architecture out to that frontage. Then there's also opportunities that we're excited to engage with the city about, about how we can improve this intersection in terms of the street network. It's controlled by Caltrans, but there really is opportunity potentially shrink crossings, introduce landscaping, and really make it a more pleasant experience for people walking across or biking across this intersection. Next slide, please. Okay, layered on top of these more public-facing open spaces, there's a network of pedestrian-only bike networks, a series of walking paths, et cetera, that are more neighborhood-oriented. They really sit more towards the residential side of the proposed project and also front kind of the existing residential neighborhood there. Next slide, please. You can see even right here the emphasis on bike connections and walking connections, and this idea of introducing a series of complete streets through the site that don't currently exist, where right now we see people walking across the parking decks just through kind of a sea of concrete and parking lots, creating those spaces and the cadence of those blocks that are comfortable for people to walk through, that feel protected, that are what we call complete streets in the context of active frontages, street furniture, street trees, parked cars, narrow lanes that allow for cyclists and bikes, and kind of slow everything down and allow for porosity through the site, and much more kind of interest through the site. Next slide, please. Obviously, layered on top of this, that's kind of all the framework underneath, introducing a variety of housing that meets a variety of needs within the community, and I think there's, it's, there's been a clear expression from the community, was the number-one piece of feedback we received during the community processes, there's a need for housing. Next slide, please. Specifically, also looking to scale that housing towards the neighborhood appropriately. So one of the pieces of feedback we got from our direct Edison Street neighbors were, they were very receptive when we first introduced the concept of kind of lower-scale ownership townhomes with front doors facing them. We actually doubled the amount of acreage that's dedicated to that in an effort to take advantage of that kind of positive reception towards that interface. Next slide, please. And then finally, the introduction of workplaces and height over towards El Camino as a way to really boost Caltrain ridership. You know, this is where employment wants to go, this is where we want the energy, El Camino has the capacity to take this type of development and run with it successfully. Next slide, please. So all of that leads to a mixed-use regional destination, and what I want to do very quickly before I turn the mic over for the last few minutes is run through a couple additional and new illustrative images that I'm looking forward to sharing tonight. Next slide, please. Looking at the gateway at El Camino and really seeing how, if you look in the upper right, this is the existing condition, this is the parking deck that you get when you, you know, when you arrive on-site right now, there's really no there there when you arrive, it's kind of just you're on El Camino and it just keeps going. And the idea is bring some architecture, bring some excitement, bring some life, see through the glass, see ground-floor retail, and actually get excited about crossing the street right there. And you can kind of see, you know, I, someone else used the, invented this phrase and I like to use it, it's, as you see beyond, it's the mall cracking open. It's no longer enclosed, it's no longer turning its back, but you can kind of see in this image the retail space, that central gathering spot, that space of energy. And I like this image because it also shows the stitching together of the north block is kind of a component of this redevelopment. In the distance, we see the residential building that also activates. Next slide, please. Zooming in a little bit, just want to acknowledge it right here, the grocery store right at this corner right here that brings a lot of energy. Next slide, please. Now stepping actually, okay, back is to the dining terrace right now, looking out over what is the future Hillsdale Center. And this is where the Bohannon Company has really kind of leveraged their partnership with the Northwood team that they've brought on board. They operate approximately 3.3 million square feet of retail throughout the country, they have deep relationships with some of the kind of best retailers in the space right now, and making sure the space is a vibrant space, and you can see flanked on the left by office, on the right with residential, ground-floor retail in both, plus standalone pavilions. It really creates the center of energy. Next slide, please. Another view of that space, but looking from within, looking back at the dining terrace, activated both during the day and in the evening. Next slide, please. And then walking down those complete streets. So this would be an example of East Sailer, this is kind of right now the service road within the parking structure of the current mall. You see the ground-floor activation of retail on the left, you see the hint at the park, you see the crosswalk, the narrow streets, this kind of sense of texture really here, this destination that brings people here. Next slide, please. And then the Hillsdale Square itself, this is that place where, you know, when parents want a cup of coffee or a glass of wine and their kids can just run about in the central square. This is really a reaction from what we heard from the community of a desire for highly-programmed, highly-active, centrally-located space. Next slide. And then finally, before I turn over the last few minutes to my colleague Laura, a transition towards the neighborhood and a gesture towards blending the site more seamlessly into the neighborhood than it does right now, and introducing townhomes fronted by a setback with bike lanes and pedestrian lanes. So at that, I'm going to turn it over to the next slide, please.
Thanks, Andrew. So now that we've had kind of the bird's-eye view of the reimagined Hillsdale, we also want to take you into a day in the life of being a visitor, being a resident, or a worker in this place. Next slide. So first, we're going to follow a young family, they live in the townhomes on Edison. Next. And dad is going to go ahead and walk the dog through the greenways and passages while mom gets their child ready for school. Next. They walk over to Laurel Elementary through their neighborhood. Next. And then dad comes back home to drive to and from work. He spends the day out of the house, drives right back, parks in his townhome. Next. And the whole family goes to a youth class at Hillsdale Square. Their kid is trying to learn the recorder, which hopefully happens in the square, not at home. Then they go to the grocery store to pick up some ingredients for a family dinner, they're making some pasta, have some fresh basil for pesto, and they bring their groceries home to make their meal. The second person that will follow through the reimagined Hillsdale is an office worker. She commutes to the site via Caltrain and arrives on-site around 8:30 in the morning. Next. After she drops off her bags, she has a quick coffee meeting in Hillsdale Square with a new colleague to welcome them to their new work neighborhood. Next. Then she heads to a nearby business meeting at a colleague's office. Next. Stops in the center for lunch and has lunch out on the patio under the shady trees. Next. And then goes back to her office to finish out the day. After she finishes her workday, she makes a quick stop for a friend's birthday gift. Next. And then goes to happy hour at Flores. Next, please. After she has happy hour with her friends, they walk together back to Hillsdale Station. Next. To take the Caltrain home. So now we've looked at a day in a life of a young family that lives on-site, an office worker who works on-site, and then finally, next, we'll look at a day where a local neighbor who lives in Beresford comes to visit Hillsdale. This local couple is, are avid cyclists, so they start their Sunday morning by coming to the farmer's market at Hillsdale Center, they stop in and buy a new bike helmet. Next. And then meet up with their cycling group for a long Sunday ride. Next. After coming back from their, from their ride, they meet back up with the bike group. Next. And have lunch in Hillsdale Square. Then finally, some of the bike group peels off, goes home, but on their way back home, the couple has a few drinks and listens to some live music in Hillsdale Center. And I hope that giving you a few glimpses at the everyday life can help you get excited.
I'm going to skip this slide to the last one real quick. Okay? Okay. I'm going to skip to the, to the last slide real quick, just in the interest of time. Elaine, if you don't mind advancing, one more. I just do want to acknowledge, we have heard a lot of feedback on this project. The five big items that we've heard. The five big items that we've heard, timeline, fiscal impact, regional retail, the importance of the El Camino crossing and traffic. We're prepared to discuss them tonight. We have some plans on how to address them in terms of our commitment to complete the project by 2040. Fiscal impact study that'll show the net benefit to Samhitaos general fund budget. A discussion about regional retailing and devising. Initial concept plans for an improved Caltrain crossing or an intersection. Discussion about traffic and some of our assumptions that we believe will lead to a 25% trip reduction as compared to a location elsewhere. Those are kind of our next steps. We're looking forward to kicking off the technical studies that focus on these as well as engaging in a series of thematic community engagement sessions on those. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So we will now open it up to public comment, right? Actually, we're going to take a five-minute bio break. So we'll re-adjourn, we'll reconvene in, at 8:15. All right. All right, we're back. So before we begin the public comments section, I just want to remind everyone to be respectful to one another. During this part of public comment, there should be no clapping, no laughing, no cheering, no jeering. Please give respect to get respect. And with that, can you please give me a total count for the number of public comments?
Certainly, Mayor. If you do wish to speak on this item and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you are joining us in person, please provide me with your request to speak. All righty.
So I understand we have two organized presentations first, and then we will go to public comment in chambers, and then we'll go to public comment online?
Yes. We have two organized presentations, five minutes each per our rules and procedure. And our current count for public comment for this item is 47 requests to speak. Per our rules and procedure, that will be one minute per person.
Through the mayor? Yes. Like to get the last name online, please, of the speaker and then also the audience. This is your final opportunity. If you want to speak, please submit a yellow card. We won't be taking any further public comment after that.
Thank you.
Last call.
Last call, folks.
The last speaker in chambers is Mary, Mary Boloria, Boloria. And our last speaker in our remote environment is Ciara A.
And folks, while I know a minute is not a lot of time, you do not have to say the same thing over and over again. So if you've already heard a comment, add new. We don't need to hear the same thing over and over again. It's just, right. Okay. So we'll go ahead and get started.
All right. We'll begin with our organized presentations with Dana Sahai.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and neighbors. My name is Dana Sahai, and I'm speaking on behalf of Checkpoint Hillsdale, a diverse group of Samhitaos residents who want this project to fit our community and benefit Samhitaos for generations. So let's be clear, this isn't just another development. It's one of the largest projects in Samhitaos history, and it will shape our city for decades. The property owner of Bohannon has partnered with Northwood Investors, an out-of-state private equity firm with one mission, to maximize profit. Our mission is different, to protect the livability, character, and sustainability of our city for current and future residents. We understand that Hillsdale Mall must evolve, but change of this magnitude demands accountability and clarity. Millions of square feet, thousands of new residents, and years of construction will test every part of our city, and we need answers before the first shovel hits the ground. The city owes residents a transparent process, real data, and honest commitments, not vague assurances and developer talking points. A project this large must undergo a full environmental review, not shortcuts under state law. Traffic must be analyzed far beyond the mall, from 101 to 280 and from 92 to the Belmont border. These corridors are already gridlocked at peak hours, and with dozens of developments on the horizon, what's the plan to keep Samhitaos moving? We also need to know whether our water, sewer, and emergency services can handle thousands of new residents and workers, and who's paying for those upgrades? And let's be honest, a project of this size will place enormous pressure on our fire and police departments. How many additional firefighters and officers will be needed to keep this area safe? Will the city need another fire engine or a police substation? What's the long-term plan to fund those positions and protect response times citywide? Our parks, libraries, and recreation centers are already stretched thin. How will they expand to meet the demand from nearly 1,400 new housing units? Will developer fees truly cover these costs? Or will residents be asked to approve yet another tax measure down the road? If this is labeled a housing development, then housing must be built first, not after years of retail and office construction. The public deserves a timeline agreement with measurable milestones and penalties for We cannot repeat the endless construction cycle we've endured at Bay Meadows. I'm sure our neighbors in Fiesta Gardens can talk to you more about that. And let's talk about scale and character. Ten-story towers should not overwhelm nearby neighborhoods. Retail must serve residents, including an affordable grocery store, and not just high-end tenants who are living there. Samhitaos deserves a project that remains a true Peninsula Shopping Destination, not an exclusive enclave. This project sits amid some of Samhitaos' more affordable housing. Hillsdale Gardens is now 100% affordable. There's Rotary, Hacienda, and Floritas, and Peninsula Station. What happens here sets the precedent for the entire El Camino corridor. This development must connect, not isolate. That means real transit links, safe bike and pedestrian routes, and traffic circulation that actually functions in the real world. Council members, you are the stewards of this city, and residents are watching what you're doing. We expect you to stand up for Samhitaos, not stand back for private equity. This is your opportunity and your responsibility to require strong, enforceable conditions of approval. That guarantees public benefits, funds essential services, and holds the developer accountable for traffic, construction, and long-term impacts. Do not let an out-of-state investment firm define Samhitaos' future. The people who live here should. Samhitaos aren't anti-growth. We're pro-Samhitaos. We want smart, balanced, transparent growth that strengthens our community, not just corporate balance sheets. Let's make sure this project works for the people who call Samhitaos home now and in the decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a reminder, no clapping, please.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Reagan.
Good evening, council members and public. Thank you for attending. Dana, thank you for some wonderful comments, and I concur with what you said. My name is Michael Reagan, and I am the president of Beresford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association, the neighborhood which will be extremely affected by this project that could extend 20 years once the development begins. Our concerns are serious, and we will be an everyday occurrence when the construction begins and even after the last nail is planted. So I will cut to the chase. Northwood Bohannon Group has, in my mind, not taken our input and concerns seriously. I've attended most of the meetings for several years, and I do feel that my comment is, is appropriate. So I'm asking you, the city council, not to use the lame excuse that there is nothing that you can do. We know what the state has mandated, but we know that you have options, and we, we want you to use those in this project. We want to be heard, and this forum does not really give us the opportunity to exchange the thoughts and ideas that we have put together. We do have a small group of concerned citizens that have been working on different plans that Northwood Development Company has been submitting to you over the past year. The latest plan that was submitted to the planning division, we are just analyzing. That group named Checkpoint Hillsdale has, along with our neighborhood, our neighborhood's input, want to be brought into the complicated process so that all parties can develop a project that serves both the city's needs, the developer's vision, and those of us who will be left to live with the final product. We wait for your response that will let us know if your concerns matter to you as our city representatives. Also want to remind you that tonight, I do want to bring up one important procedure, Measure T, that was approved by the city, and some of the things that were promised to us. Provide affordable housing. I don't see much of this in this project. Help small businesses. The loss of jobs at Trader Joe's and all the jobs lost at Hillsdale cannot be replaced. Protect essential services. Is money going to be allocated for the improvement of our police, fire, and emergency services? And the other, other important part is increasing taxes. Hopefully, we were told that there was going to, not going to be any increase in taxes. So we do hope that is something that you consider in this project. I would like to ask the people here that are concerned about the loss of Hillsdale Mall and the future of this project, if you could put your hands up, please. Thank you so much. So I think there is a huge concern for this project, and a lot of thought has to be put into it. So those who are interested here and listening, I'll say it again, if you are interested in getting, in being a part of this project, you can go to checkpointhillsdale@gmail.com, and we would love your support, and hopefully we can work together in making this a viable and profitable for all parties concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the individual comments to ensure we get to all the public comments in a timely manner. When I call your name, please line up to my right, and that will be greatly appreciated. I will call up the first three speakers. First speaker is Jerry Brazil, followed by Craig Citron, and John F. Nitter. First, Jerry.
Five minutes, is that it? What's the time? Oh, one minute. Oh, I get a one-minute wish list, then. Okay, all electric housing, that's one thing. All with Level 2 EV charging stations and solar roof panels everywhere. When, you can add also solar wall panels, recycle water. This is supposed to be a transit link, so you should have dedicated stations for Uber and Lyft, and you should have dedicated stations for Waymo. I see Waymo going up and down the street all the time. They should have some part of this also. Zoux-type self-driving vehicles like they're doing free in Las Vegas right now, and this should all be transportation to and from the Caltrain station. You should have some reference to electric bike and electric scooter parking areas and some way of containing all these electrical devices going in and out. And also, you should have some little park for dogs, a little dog park. One minute, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Citron.
Followed by-
Followed by John.
Folks, let's try something. Instead of this, this, all right? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Craig Citron, and I serve on the Board of Directors of San Mateo Police Activities League, PAL, and I am currently the incoming chair-elect. We are here tonight simply to express our appreciation for the longstanding support that the Bohannon Development Company and the Hillsdale Shopping Center have provided to San Mateo PAL, our youth, and the greater San Mateo community. For many years, Bohannon has been an outstanding corporate partner, supporting, attending our annual fundraisers, contributing to our school, Supply Drive that provides backpack and supplies for low-income families, and awarding grants that directly benefit underserved and at-risk youth through PAL's educational, recreational, and enrichment programs. Thanks to the support of companies like Bohannon Development, last year, PAL served more than 1,800 youth, awarded 18 scholarships to help high school seniors, many of them were first in their families.
The next speaker is John F. Nitter, followed by Dominic Barcy and Merritt Gorman.
Good evening, council. This project would deny the council pursuing one of its most important goals of inclusiveness. If we fail to take deliberate steps to include the marginalized members of our community, we risk perpetuating the segregation that has long divided us. Segregation has been the root of so many of our nation's ills, and addressing it will require sustained collaborative efforts from the public, private businesses, and government agencies. This council has verbalized its eagerness to boldly confront housing issues all the while helping historically unrepresented groups. You now have a golden opportunity to affirm that commitment. I urge you to encourage the developer to set aside four acres of this site for 100% affordable housing in the very low and the low range. This mall's transformation is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to redefine what progress means, not as profit alone, but as collective well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dominic Barcy, followed by Merritt Gorman, and followed by Laura Rodell.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Barcy. I'm a lifelong resident of Fiesta Gardens. I graduated Sarah High School in 2021, and I'm proud to be a fourth-year member apprentice in the local plumbers' union now. I've grown up watching San Mateo evolve, and as someone who's building a career in the local union trades, I want to share one simple hope, that the Hillsdale Mall redevelopment project will be built by local union workers, people like me who grew up here, who care deeply about the city and take pride in doing the job right. We invest in training, safety, and provide local wages, health insurance, and retirement benefits, and they create pathways for young people like myself to stay and work in the community we call home. I'm excited by what's ahead, and I'd be honored one day to say that I helped build a project that will stand as a symbol of our city's progress. I respectfully ask that you commit to using union contractors on the redevelopment project so local workers like me get an opportunity to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Merritt Gorman, followed by Laura Rodell, and followed by Elliot Simon.
Thank you. Thank you. My questions for tonight's meeting is how does the city plan on solving the traffic nightmare that this Bohannon complex will cause? Please don't suggest that everyone will take Caltrain, bike, or walk or bike, because that's not a reality, especially for disabled members of our community that do enjoy the mall and the indoor feature that it offers, especially in inclement weather. What guarantees will be made in writing that the new buildings won't exceed 10 stories, including any HVAC systems on top of the building? And what can be done to lower the heights of the proposed buildings along El Camino Real? What guarantees will be made in writing to stop mitigate light pollution that these new tall buildings will cause, both at night, during construction, and after? What guarantees will be made in writing that Trader Joe's will stay within this construction project? With the influx of so many people, what other quality, affordable markets will be added, like Hebb or Aldi, to serve the community within this complex? What guarantees will be made in writing that the new buildings won't create noise pollution like with the new HVAC systems? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Rodell, followed by Elliot Simon, and followed by Rama Peterson.
Hello, members of the city council and my fellow residents of San Mateo. My name is Laura Rodell, and as a San Mateo resident, I launched the savehillsdellmall.org website because I believe this plan will negatively impact our community in three major ways: the loss of essential retail access, infrastructure strain for utilities, including not having underground utilities to support this massive project, and then the community impact. Hillsdale Mall has been a community gathering spot for more than 70 years. This plan erases our shared history and eliminates a vital social hub for families, seniors, and young people. Other communities in San Francisco and across the country have successfully revitalized their malls without demolition. It's possible for shopping malls to explore other reuse, mixed-use concepts based on services and consumables. Thank you for considering our city's malls must evolve, but that evolution must come at the cost, not at the cost of straining our infrastructure.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elliot Simon, followed by Rama Peterson, followed by John Medina.
Good evening. I'm Elliot Simon, and I'm a San Mateo resident and a second-year apprentice with the IBW Local 617. I can't believe to tell you how my life, or I can't begin to tell you how my life has changed in the things I've learned since becoming an apprentice. The development of the Hillsdale Mall is an opportunity to give other young San Mateo residents the chance to get the training that will change their lives, too. 50,000 apprentice hours could be needed if you approved just the 1,500 housing units that are being proposed. Knowing that work is coming, my union can offer more openings in our training center. Of course, this is also a deal for the developers, since as apprentices, we are paid a training wage, while our contractors make sure there is no drop in the quality of our work. As part of what you eventually approve, I hope you make it clear you expect folks like me to help build it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rama Peterson, followed by John Medina, and followed by Juan Bernardino Velasco.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I'm Rama Peterson. I've been a resident of San Mateo for over 16 years. I'm also the president of IBW 617, so I'm here speaking for our several dozen members who live in San Mateo. I want to first thank you for your leadership by dedicating the time and effort in reviewing the plans for the redevelopment of Hillsdale Mall. We all know the importance this space has played in our community. What you choose to eventually approve will help define our city for decades to come. We have not yet taken a position on the fundamental question in front of you, which is what should be the job creation and housing balance of the eventual site plan? What we do know is that housing for our members in this county is a tremendous financial burden, impacting all aspects of family life. So clearly, the site must help to address this crisis. We all know that, we also know that we can expect a high demand for Class 1 office and research space with the retail pressure being placed by the AI boom.
Thank you.
Please build with the union labor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Medina, followed by Juan Bernardino, and followed by Lisa Malley.
Hello, council members, mayor's staff. John Medina, I have many hats. I'm a business agent for Sprinkler Fitters, executive board member of San Mateo Building Trades, and the TIP Program, 1,000-foot radius, resident here in San Mateo, a parent, coach, county commissioner. I want to acknowledge, this is difficult to stand here in favor of a project like this in literally my backyard, right? But I know this mall redevelopment has the potential to bring tremendous benefits to the community if it's done right. I strongly encourage the developer to actively engage with the building trades, to prioritize local hire, including apprentices, and to commit to using union general contractors for both the commercial and the residential parts of the project. Furthermore, also urge the city council and the staff to ensure that the terms of the development agreement uphold high labor standards, man, this goes quick, including equitable prevailing wages, fair working conditions, and a local workforce development. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juan Bernardino, followed by Lisa Malley, and followed by Bart Pantoja.
Good evening, council members, mayor and staff. My name is Juan Velasco. I'm a San Mateo resident. I'm raising my newly formed family in this community. I'm also a graduate of the Trades Introduction Program in San Mateo, which is a pre-apprenticeship program that helps people like me get into the construction trade. Thanks to this free program offered to me by the San Mateo Building Trades, I'm now an apprentice of the Sprinkler Fitters Local 43. The project at Hillsdale Mall will require a few thousand construction workers to be completed. If commitments are made to hire local workers, this will give me, along with other trades, the opportunity to be a part of this momentous project. In addition, this project will take a few years to complete and will give trades like mine stable work to continue to provide for our families. I'm glad to see this project will also include affordable housing. This gives me hope that I can continue to lay my roots down in San Mateo for years to come. I understand that developers will be meeting with my union and other construction trades, so please consider making the commitment to use local workers such as myself to support the needs of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Malley, followed by Bart Pantoja, followed by Alexandra Westbrook.
Good evening, council, mayor, and council members. My name is Lisa Malley. I am not an apprentice. Not only is the Hillsdale, proposed Hillsdale development inappropriate for a suburban neighborhood because of its massive height, density, and scale, it's an unwelcoming fortress with no integration into the neighborhood or the community. The Hillsdale Station Plan and the El Camino Real Plan require street-level retail and dining along many of the proposed major street frontages to create a vibrant, pedestrian-friendly environment. This in turn contributes to the transit-oriented development goals. However, most of the street frontages of the project are secured parking facilities, not retailer dining. This development focuses inward, prioritizing its own amenities and circulation instead of connecting with the surrounding community, hence limiting the social interaction beyond its boundaries.
Thank you. I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Our next speaker is Bart Pantoja, followed by Alexandra Westbrook, and followed by Rick Bonilla.
Thank you. Well done. I'm a proud graduate of apprenticeship program. On behalf of the, on behalf of the 23 trades unions totaling of 10,000 construction workers of the Building Trades Council, I am speaking to express our enthusiasm for the upcoming Hillsdale Mall redevelopment. We strongly advocate for the inclusion of workforce benefits. These benefits are crucial for ensuring that the residents who contribute to our community through their work and construction are duly recognized and supported. To achieve this, we believe there are some essential standards that are needed: a local workforce utilization, apprenticeship training programs, union trade involvement, and accountability for wages and working conditions. We're eager to collaborate with the developer to discuss these proposed standards and to ensure the project truly benefits our entire community. Our goal is to promote and sustain a vibrant local economy and invest in the working class of the city of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexandra Westbrook, followed by Rick Bonilla, and followed by Mitch Spiegel.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alex Westbrook, and I live on Sylvan Ave, a few blocks west of the Hillsdale Development, and I was born and raised in the Bay Area. My husband and I were lucky to buy a home near Hillsdale in 2022, but it was incredibly expensive. It's clear that housing costs have gotten out of control. We need to build more housing if we want our kids to have a chance to live where they grow up. I read through the Hillsdale Reimagine plans, and I fully support them. The north block has clearly been a success, while the south block clearly needs an update. I'm especially excited for the Hillsdale Old Square and the chance for community events there. I hope the parks will use real grass rather than artificial turf. Real grass is more pleasant and better for the watershed. My only concern is timing. I urge you guys to move quickly and so that we don't have to wait 20 years for this new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Bonilla, followed by Mitch Spiegel, and followed by Kevin Simpson.
Mayor and council members, I speak tonight in strong support of the Hillsdale Reimagine proposal. This is exactly the type of thoughtful, future-focused development San Mateo needs. The plan adds up to 1,670 new homes, wherein none exist today, including affordable units and places both housing and jobs right next to the Hillsdale Caltrain Station. That is smart planning, reducing traffic, supporting public transit, and helping lower greenhouse gas emissions. It also exceeds our housing element goals for transit-oriented housing and adds new public spaces and amenities that benefit the entire community. Concerns have been raised regarding a 5:1 job-to-housing ratio. That figure uses gross building square footage, which includes parking and non-office space, such as retail. A thriving community needs both homes and jobs near transit, and this delivers that balance. Malls across the country are struggling. Now is the right time to reimagine Hillsdale as a walkable, vibrant, mixed-use neighborhood rather than risk decline and underuse. Support the Hillsdale Reimagine proposal and move San Mateo forward in a more sustainable and inclusive manner.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mitch Spiegel, and follow, I'm so sorry, and followed by Kevin Simpson, and followed by K. Ave Talakai Jr.
Did my minute start it now, or are you gonna wait, you're gonna reset?
We'll restart the timer.
It's quick. Hello, council, how are you guys? Good to see you, Mayor Rob. I would like to commend the creation of dense, walkable, for-sale residential homes up and above the requirements set by the state and near mass transit that helps residents stay and invest in their communities. I would ask the city council and the development team to leverage San Mateo's new below-market-rate for-sale housing regulations to build family-sized for-sale BMR units, not just studio and one-bedroom units, to give low- and moderate-income families a path to homeownership and expand homeownership and housing supply, which will increase tax revenue and promote long-term stability across all income levels. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Simpson, followed by K. Ave Talakai, followed by Bruce Bean.
Good evening, council. Thanks for letting me speak. I also am very much in favor of broad outlines of this project. I think it offers a lot. The death of every mall that killed downtowns across our country is something that's welcome to me. I don't have any sympathy for the south block. I'm excited about a lot of what we see in the plan. I think there's some oddities that still need to be worked out. I think the placement of the grocery store is weird. I'd like to see Mr. Bohannon make a personal commitment that there will be a grocery store, a general line, full service, fruits and vegetables, meats, the whole line, in this commitment, come hell or high water. I would like to see a better connection to the Caltrain station for pedestrians and bicyclists. I would like to see us build it with union labor. I'm not a union member or an apprentice. I was a secretary of a union local a long time ago back in Ohio, but we need to keep building with good, good union labor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is K. Ave Talakai, followed by Bruce Bean, followed by Amy Okuta.
Hello, my name is Cassie Talia Abraham Talakai Jr. I'm grateful to be here. I help oversee the training for the electrical apprenticeship in San Mateo County. I've been tasked, all the high schools and middle schools are reaching out for us to go and talk about the trades. October 24th, I went and spoke at Aragon. They run the MC3 Pre-Ap apprenticeship Program, and I'm talking to these students and encouraging them to apply to the apprenticeship. This project, they'll be able to work on. And the more I speak to the students, we can take in more apprentices if the work is there for us. So if this project is built all-union, I'll have more candidates when I speak to them in these schools. So I hope we can make an agreement to use union labor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Bean, followed by Amy Okuta, followed by Erica Wood.
So good evening, council members. I'm Bruce Bean. I've been a member of the San Mateo community for 35 years. I'd like to take you on a slightly different walk than we previously had earlier. Imagine with your significant other, your family, or good friends, you're headed for your favorite restaurant. As you stroll along, you hear the laughter of children. You're running through the plaza. The families are listening to live music that's drifting through the air. The whole scene feels alive and full of joy. You arrive at the restaurant. The Romas are inviting. The meal's beautiful and well-prepared. At the end of the bar, the World Series is going on, and at the other end, the Warriors are playing the Pacers. So it's a great time. The energy is just contagious. Good food, good company, good times. So I think that's what we have now, and I think that's what the larger Hillsdale will be.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Okuta, followed by Erica Wood, followed by Heather Cleary.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Amy. I'm San Mateo-born, educator, parent, resident in north-central San Mateo. Tonight, I implore those in power to firstly, ensure the absolute maximum number of housing units are built, as there is a surplus of unused office spaces nearby already. Secondly, that the maximum number of very low and low-rate housing is planned for our most vulnerable neighbors. Next, that you prioritize the building of planned for our most vulnerable neighbors. Next, that you prioritize the building of an affordable grocery store that will serve current and future residents. Next, that you would prioritize the building of housing over all other types of construction. Lastly, that you would maximize indoor communal spaces for our elderly and disabled neighbors to safely and easily enjoy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Wood, followed by Heather Cleary, followed by Carla Bagneschi.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and Council members. Erica Wood with the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce. As has been stated, this is a transformational project and will be for decades to come. That's why the Chamber has been pleased to facilitate community engagement on this project through our Public Policy Committee at our September Arts and Culture Fest and other efforts. We do recognize David Bohannon and his family's longstanding commitment to community investment and public benefit, and we believe that commitment will be crucial for ensuring the project's long-term success. With that in mind, we encourage a focus on a vibrant retail mix, housing opportunities including affordable, support for small businesses, favorable lease terms, options for relocation, and finally, careful consideration of the fiscal impacts, so that we know this will benefit the city and the local economy and residents over the long term. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Cleary, followed by Carla Bagneschi, followed by Margaret Spicer.
Mayor and Council members, San Mateo has an opportunity to build thoughtful housing and thoughtful community spaces for our nonprofit workers, for our public servants, and for our union workers. Now, you all know me as Heather Cleary, CEO of Peninsula Family Service, so I would be remiss if I didn't say it's also a missed opportunity for an infant toddler center much needed in this community. But I'm very grateful, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, that I've been able to follow this project and watch it develop. And I feel we have a really good opportunity here. This project is good for business, and it's good for San Mateo. And I'm grateful for the Bohannon team for having the vision to redevelop the South Block. I also appreciate their decades of corporate partnership and their support of this community for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Bagneschi, followed by Margaret Spicer, and followed by Christine Agopian.
Good evening. I'm Carla Benieski, born and raised here, and I live half a block from the mall. I'm all for mixed-use development, new urbanism, pedestrian-oriented development is what inspired me to go into urban planning. I worked for the city of San Mateo and the Port of San Francisco. There are four principles of good urban design, as New York City outlined. One of them is care for a neighborhood's history, culture, and identity. I don't feel that the scale and density of this project provides that for the areas surrounding this Hillsdale Mall, which is single-family and apartments. 11 seconds. I beg of you, if the developers listening, scale down the size of the office towers. 10 stories is completely out of scale with this neighborhood and violates one of the basic design principles for urban planning. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, please, our next speaker is Margaret Spicer, followed by Christine Agopian, followed by Cole Jess Snutter.
Hi, I'm a small-business owner and a resident in San Mateo, and I'm opposed to this development. I moved my office five times in the first six years of practice, hoping that my final location will remain on 25th Avenue. I'm concerned this development will further push out small businesses and crowd people into increasingly tight space. Parking has been limited, and the claims of public transportation is unrealistic expectations on the citizens in this community. The cost of operating a brick-and-mortar business is increasingly difficult, with the continued demolishment and rebuilding with bigger and more expensive office spaces putting the pressure on small businesses. Many of my patients are the backbone of our community: housekeepers, gardeners, restaurant workers. There is increased difficulty making ends meet with the cost of living, with no place to park their work trucks to keep them near their homes, for example, in these big buildings. Housing costs will continue to increase and push out people who contribute to the community. Please oppose. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, thank you. Our next speaker is Christina Agopian, followed by Cole Jess Snutter, and followed by Caitlin Regan.
Hello, good evening. I want to shout out for small businesses and the ability to keep small businesses in small retail spaces. I live about three or four blocks east of the Hillsdale Mall and regularly use the mall and Trader Joe's. Wanted to talk about what we're going to be losing in this current plan, which is, number one, Trader Joe's, which is busy all the time, parking lots packed, lines everywhere, definitely one of the highest-traffic spaces in the area. Would be ashamed to lose that for the broader community. Also, the retail in the mall. Folks don't walk to do retail shopping. They don't walk to the grocery stores and carry their bags back. So you also need parking for folks who live more than, you know, a five-minute walk away, as we regularly do. Want to just ask that you consider the ability for folks to do retail shopping.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cole Jess Snutter, followed by Caitlin Regan, followed by Harvey McKeon.
Good evening, Council. I want to express my strong support for the Hillsdale Mall redevelopment. I think this project will be tremendously beneficial for San Mateo in the long term. I want to thank the developers for their continued investment in our community. Given the project's SB 330 designation, the question isn't if it moves forwards, but how we ensure its long-term success. The current iteration of the proposal lacks some detail on implementation, particularly regarding the retail plaza, shopping options, and construction timeline. I'd like to hear whether the project can be fast-tracked to minimize disruption and avoid a 20-year build-out. Finally, I'm curious why the housing unit count was reduced from roughly 1,600 units to about 1,400 units in the latest proposal. We need more housing in San Mateo. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Caitlin Regan, followed by Harvey McKeon, followed by Joel Weiss.
Good evening. I'd like to support, voice my support for more affordable housing options as well. I moved here straight out of grad school. I struggled to find reasonable housing options near public transit. At this point, my partner and I are now fortunate enough to own a home in the Beresford community just west of the mall. We commute daily via bike and/or bike and Caltrain, so we strongly support any proposed infrastructure improvements in bike and pedestrian infrastructure, especially with respect to safer ways to cross El Camino. We look forward to living here for decades to come, and we hope that there's a lot of thought towards thoughtful, sustainable, open community spaces, more local businesses, and definitely an affordable grocery option. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harvey McKeon, followed by Joel Weiss, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Hey, good evening. I'm Harvey with the NorCal Carpenters Union. We represent over 35,000 construction workers across 11 apprenticeship crafts, so that's anywhere up to 70% of any given construction project. And to be clear, the philosophy of our union is to have the back of all workers. So that's both our members, but also those workers that haven't managed to join a union yet, but who need someone like our organization to look out for them. And that's why we have set new labor standards in residential construction via multiple-state bills over the recent years. Generally, we think this looks like a potentially exciting project with a lot of potential to create good jobs. And as the largest single, organized voice in construction, we may remain ready and willing to partner with the developer in creative ways in order to maximize the potential economic benefits of this development and put local residents to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joel Weiss, followed by Jordan Grimes, followed by Eleanor Pence.
Chantal, can we get the next five speakers to line up against the wall, please?
Yes, the last speaker actually would be Mary Voloria.
I came to voice my support for a reimagining of the Hillsdale space, but I now feel strongly that local union labor should be used throughout the project, so I want to echo my support for that. I'm excited about seeing my community continue to grow with added public space, community events, and more housing. We need more parks and shared spaces. New businesses and new housing will provide exciting opportunities for growth in our community. This is a transformational project, and I'm excited about the transformation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor. Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park, lifelong resident of San Mateo. Like other speakers, also in support of this project. Change is hard. I think we all know that, but it's also the only constant in life. And rather than fighting it with everything we have, we should try and shape it into something that we want. There are a number of comments I heard tonight that I agree with, Kevin Simpson's especially around the Caltrain connection, around maximization of housing on the site. I was also pretty disappointed to see the unit count go down from 1,670 to 13-something. Would love to see if we can't add more back in. I also really strongly disagree about the comments about neighborhood character. I think this is absolutely appropriate for San Mateo. We are a city of 100 and something-thousand people now. We are no longer a small town. It's appropriate. We have the jobs, we have the people, and we need places to house them. Please move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eleanor Pence.
Good evening. This plan as presented provides many important elements: the grocery store, the third spaces, the Caltrain integration, and most importantly, the plan to build more housing. Preventing people from building anything new won't preserve the mall in amber, protect the existing jobs or the spaces. It'll just create an empty mall eventually. So stalling on development prevents us from building housing, which San Mateo desperately needs, and it continues to burden working families with the crushing housing costs that come from this area's chronic housing shortage. We make it impossible for people to live near where they work and go to school, to put down roots and build communities. The best housing is the housing that we actually build, and I appreciate that this plan moves forward with doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker in chambers is Mary Voloria.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and the general audience. I grew up in Burlingame, actually right on the border of Burlingame and San Mateo, and I went to the mall since I was a baby. And so there are a lot of people who are very concerned about the fact that the retail space is being incredibly shrunk from what it is currently. I thought this was a Hillsdale Mall reimagining. It sounds more like Hillsdale Mall housing development. I'm all for housing, if we need the housing. I'm all for low-income housing and housing for people who are in great need of it. I don't think 14% or 15% is quite enough. And lastly, I'd like to state I'm very much against the office space of nine-to-12-story buildings. I'm sorry, but that's just way too high, and it's going to dwarf the rest of the neighborhood, where we have one- and two-story buildings for small businesses and for residences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, we have nine speakers, one minute each. Our first speaker will be Susan, and our last speaker in our remote environment will be Caroline Shepherd. Susan?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Everyone, my name is Susan Rowinsky. I live within 500 feet of this development, and I want to encourage City Council and staff to prioritize the needs and the concerns of those that live 500 feet from this development project. We've heard from a lot of people from other parts of San Mateo, which is great, but they're not as impacted as we are. Second of all, I encourage staff and City Council to hold meetings as it relates to the impacts of the construction project. Construction is going to go on for a long period of time, I get it, but we need to hold meetings to mitigate its impact. For example, each morning, roughly between 100 to 200 cars from the Hillsdale Garden Apartments park at the Wells Fargo and the Trader Joe's parking lot, that's fine, but where are they going to go during construction?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Louise Mirante.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and Council members. My name is Louis Mirante. I'm Senior Vice President of Public Policy with the Bay Area Council, a regional business association that advocates to make the Bay Area the best place to live and work in the world. Key to that is producing more housing and ending our immense housing crisis. Hillsdale Mall redevelopment represents a textbook example of what we're all working towards. It reflects the affordability and sustainable transportation values of the general plan. It reflects the legislature's similar goals in acting housing laws, and reflects the personal values of most people committed to affordability and sustainability. The project qualifies as a housing development under the HAA, and the council has helped shape, which the council has helped shape by sponsoring recent legislation. This entitles it to the vesting protections and objective standard review earlier discussed. It's located within half a mile of the Hillsdale Caltrain Station, making it eligible for AB 2097, another law the Bay Area Council sponsored, and one that exempts the project from minimum parking standards altogether. So all the parking spots being offered are above and beyond what's required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Abrow.
Okay, thank you. The overall concept of the Hillsdale redevelopment is very good and should be supported. The high density is needed in order to make this project happen and be affordable. The height along El Camino Real is needed so that you can open up the open space and make the area along Edison a nice residential area that conforms with the neighborhood. But the whole overall project is a housing project, and so you need to see if you can get back up to the 1,670 units, that they be focused on low, very low, and extremely low income, and that they are built early or concurrently with the rest of the project, and that you have a number of units there sized for families with two or three bedrooms. And looking at that crossing over to Caltrain is also very important to make this transit-oriented. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gladwin DeSosa.
Good evening. David D. Bohannon can be characterized as an architect of redlining through his large-scale suburban developments in the San Francisco Bay Area nearly a century ago. He actively implemented and amplified redlining's effects, developing thousands of homes in Hillsdale and other Bay Area cities with restrictive racial covenants. By shaping entire communities based on race, Bohannon played a pivotal role in institutionalizing housing segregation in the Bay Area. The council was complicit in and benefited from redlining's practice to institutionalize long-term segregation and wealth disparities. Please correct this legacy with concrete actions such as low and extremely low-income affordable housing, housing equity initiatives, reparative zoning reforms, and community investments in historically marginalized neighborhoods. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Doug Levin.
Good evening, Council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I live south of Hillsdale Mall. Because of the garden apartments, also owned by the developer, we already have significant parking issues in the area. I'm concerned that the parking problem will get exacerbated by this new project, making things much worse. This occurs, will occur not only during the construction, but after the project is completed, where the people of the garden apartments will no longer have a place to park. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Astrid Bartharaisian.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
The first presenter said a lot of things about this being a housing development, therefore, we have nothing to say about it. So I'm not sure why I'm even here. But I do want to say that besides the immediate effect right next to the shopping center, I live behind the tracks on Pacific Boulevard and Lori Meadows. Right now, if I want to get to 101 anytime after 4 o'clock on a weekday, I have to go to Ralston Avenue and go back up. There is no way to get through the traffic, and now they're also building a new property right on our border. So I would hope that somebody from the developer will sit at about 4:00 PM at Lori Meadows and Pacific Boulevard and see what's going on, trying to get to the freeway, and try to work that into the overall plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Austin.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for your attention this evening. I just wanted to encourage you to continue to think vertically as you consider this building, as it gives room for not only more housing, but also room for small businesses and other business considerations. I would also like you to consider pairing this future development with a bike lane and pedestrian infrastructure heading east, as it would connect it to existing Whole Foods Market, as well as the existing Hashi Mart, and eventually, the existing Los Prados Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Morgan. Our next speaker is Thomas Morgan.
Hi, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My concern with the project is, under SB 330, there's not supposed to be hotels, but obviously these units are going to be on Airbnb, and apartments are going to have corporate housing, so I'd like there to be restrictions on those so that these units stay affordable. Secondly, I'd encourage then everybody to look at Hills, Bay Meadows, and Station Park Green, those projects took really long to build, and find the things that we didn't like in those, and make sure those mistakes are not repeated, particularly in the presentation tonight. The ambiguity about that one area, I think it needs to be defined, and we can't allow it to change. And if there is change, there needs to be consequences and reevaluation of fees. And just mixed use in general. I'm kind of pessimistic against it because operationally, there's three different, between retail, office, and
Thank you.
Presidential specialties, and they don't necessarily
Thank you. Our next speaker is Caroline Shepherd.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Caroline Shepherd. I'm the president of Solutions for Supportive Homes. I want to encourage the council to consider including permanent supportive housing for the extremely low-income population, which includes those with disabilities as part of the 15% lower income group. Solutions for Supportive Homes represents parents who are supporting their adult children with mental health challenges, who will require housing with onsite support once the parents pass away. So the location of this development is ideal because of its proximity to transit, shopping, and entertainment. And while it's not appropriate for all who have mental health needs, for those with some independent living skills, onsite support ensures safety and ideally, community opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker in our remote environment will be Ciara A.
Good evening. I am a graduating Hillsdale High School senior, and my main concern lies within the period of time in which the construction will take place. 20 years of construction, how is that going to affect traffic in neighborhoods stuck right next to these sites? It's not going to be a year, it's not going to be two, it's going to be 20 or more years of constant noise pollution and traffic ingestion. Just imagine waking up to the sweet song of jackhammers and bulldozers for 20 years, mind you. The question also lies in how affordable is affordable regarding this highly ambitious redevelopment project? Would a low-income family that's not in the same prestigious kind of tech or similar jobs be able to afford these housings? And what of the environment? How many trees and native flora are going to be integrated into this new area that help protect or remind us of the earth that we're inhabiting? We, as citizens, we have to put our feelings into words. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
All right, we're going to conclude public comment, and we're going to take a 10-minute recess before we come back to hear from the council with questions, comments, and feedback.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to continue. Please take your seats or leave the room. Thank you. All right, and we're back. So we've closed public comment and we're now going to move on to questions, comments, and feedback from the council. And Councilwoman Sworko Kadiki has volunteered to go first. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you through the mayor. I'd like to thank everyone in the community for showing up tonight, including members of the Bohannon Group to discuss what could be the most significant development project in the city of San Mateo in decades. I know there are a lot of strong and mixed opinions about this project, so I just wanted to remind the public that this meeting does not involve any sort of vote tonight about the project. The purpose of tonight is really a study session for the city and the community so we can learn more about the proposed development project. As mentioned in the city report, phasing for this project is a major area of concern, and I agree, we need more details there. However, that being said, coming into tonight, I anticipated that other members of the council will likely dig into phasing, so I've decided to focus on a few other topics that I heard were important to the community. And this includes frontage on El Camino, harking, economic impacts to businesses and retailers, environmental impacts, and then youth community impact. So I'd like to invite the Bohannon Group up. I do have a series of questions on the El Camino frontage. And then Zach, if you could, I believe it was slide three where we actually have the frontage. And just for sake of transparency, I do have about, with all these sections, about five pages of questions. Obviously, I'll eliminate some if you answer it, but I do have a few in each area.
Sounds good.
I think while they pull that up, you know, I'd love to start with, what are your plans for safe pedestrian and bicycle connections to the Hillsdale Caltrain Station and surrounding neighborhoods?
Yeah, and if it's appropriate now, we can also pull up a portion of our presentation that has an appendix. I'll share that, sorry, I feel like this is picking up a lot right here. I'll share that we know and we understand that we've heard a lot of feedback from the community and from council members also in other communication as well, how important this is to the community. We believe it's an important component as well. One of the ways that we think this could be most improved, in addition to some of the kind of onsite architectural moves that are being done, is a look at the actual El Camino 31st intersection and seeing where there's potential to shrink crossing distance, extend bulb outs, and add landscaping and signals to vehicles that this is an appropriate place to slow down.
Can we actually, next slide? Just want to make sure I'm looking at the right one. Keep going. Keep going. Maybe it's, yeah, keep going. Okay, can we pull up your appendix?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
I can, do you want me to keep giving a little more context while we wait for it to come?
Yeah.
So the challenge that we all know is that El Camino is controlled by Caltrans, so it is outside the property. That said, we do look forward to working with the city to see if we can initiate some kind of process with Caltrans to see what alternatives they'd consider. The other complexity is just from the geometry of El Camino itself. So north of 31st, it operates as kind of the, you know, same six-lane-wide arterial that it does as it goes towards downtown. Just south of 31st, it actually gets a lot more complicated. It actually becomes 11 lanes wide. It dips down in a trench to become more of a freeway condition with service roads on either side. And so we've actually had our civil engineer start looking at and taking preliminary analysis of what could be done, though, to improve that connection. And I am conscientious that we really want to work in partnership with city staff to go through this, and we have not yet because it's been something we've been working on because we just heard that it was a really important issue. I am waiting for it to come up. We do have a proposed starting place. It's not the final point where we end up, but I think it's the place where we want to start. Our philosophy, I'll just add, is that keeping a mix of uses together in the same plane and making that a safer environment for everyone is better than splitting pedestrians, vehicles into kind of separate layers, which tends to just create these conditions that can feel uncomfortable, that gives the signals to drivers, this is actually a highway or a freeway, and go ahead and speed up here, and really kind of undermines this idea of stitching together in a more organic way, the west of El Camino, east of El Camino, and then onwards to Caltrain and Bay Meadows.
So with that, you know, several residents have suggested the possibility of a bike and pedestrian bridge over El Camino and then connecting the development to the Caltrain Station. In the past, your team has indicated that such a bridge is not possible. Could you explain how your engineering team came to that conclusion?
Yeah, and I'll qualify maybe that it's not that it's not possible. I think it, in our view and our kind of, the consultants that we have on our team and the designers and the experts we have on our team, feel it's not actually the most productive or the safest alternative to improve the connection. And if it's all right with you, with your permission, I'd love to invite up Laura Johnson from GEL, who's the lead urban designer on the project.
Yep, so we have studied pedestrian and cyclist overpass, and for a few reasons, we think that we are much better off improving the crossing condition at the ground level. So the first is that if you allow for a pedestrian overpass, it allows vehicles to actually speed up. It makes them think, okay, this is a place where I don't have to look for pedestrians, I don't have to look for bikes, I'm going to go faster. However, people always take the path of least resistance. And so if somebody has to walk backwards to go forwards, they'll likely just cross at grade. And so what we've seen is that actually pedestrian and cyclist bridges, while in theory are safer, when they're not used correctly, they are actually a recipe for higher, for less safe pedestrian crossings. So our goal here is to actually shorten the crossing distance so that you don't have to cross as quickly and you don't feel like you're kind of against the clock. So a slightly longer crossing time and shorter crossing distance. And then we've also looked into other precedents locally where pedestrian bridges have been used, and I think one that we've seen recently is the pedestrian bridge over Geary at Japantown. So as they were doing renovations of Peace Plaza, they actually removed that pedestrian bridge that went over Geary because they had to, and instead improved the pedestrian experience at the ground level. And the determination was that pedestrian, casual pedestrian injuries and fatalities actually went down with those at-grade pedestrian improvements, and so they are not reinstating the bridge that goes over Geary.
Thank you. I think, you know, just to add some feedback here, when we're saying improving, you know, the crosswalk conditions, it would be wonderful if your team could meet with our city engineers so we could actually dig into that.
Yeah.
Like, what does that mean? And I think you heard several comments tonight about accessibility as well, and really thinking about, you know, modernizing and kind of the future of crossing for biking, for pedestrians, and also those with disability as well.
And this is where I may take advantage of our appendix now that it's up. I'm not sure, Chantel, you're the one who's controlling, or Elaine, are you? Elaine, do you mind flipping? I don't remember exactly which one it is, but if we advance it a couple ones, there's a, keep going, if you don't mind, keep going, keep going, keep going. Next, next, next. I don't think it's too deep in here. Next, next. There we go. So this is a very preliminary layout of one of the ideas we've been toying around that we're excited to engage with city staff, and this is kind of literally hot off the press. And so we don't want to make assumptions that this is the ultimate way to go, one way or the other, and we think there's opportunities to work with the city. But you can see what's been done here, and this was designed by our civil engineer, Kim Lee Horn, if there are specific questions on it. But essentially, it's bulging out the intersections, taking a lane where there are currently turn lanes, and Kim Lee Horn's assessed the way, one of the challenges is getting the northbound El Camino surface street to re-merge with the trenched part of El Camino as it comes up, to do that south of the intersection. And by doing that south of the intersection, you basically get to take a lane. You also get the opportunity then to incorporate a bus pullout north of the intersection as well, which has other advantages from kind of just making this more of an intermodal, transit-friendly, multimodal-friendly experience. The one last thing I'll comment, and then I'll stop talking on this, but in addition to the pedestrian crosswalk, because 31st Avenue does have bike sharrows through the site of Hillsdale and then continues onto a bike lane once you get on the other side, actually putting explicit bike markings at the crossings does facilitate and kind of give recognition to cyclists in comfort and requires the vehicles stopping at the intersection to stop further back to give additional room.
Okay. Still on the frontage, so residents have expressed concern about pedestrian and safety on the El Camino side of the project. Can you explain what type of strategies you will employ to ensure pedestrian-friendly frontages, you know, remain?
Yes. So right now, current condition, it's a relatively uncomfortable frontage to walk along. Cars are going very quickly and they come right next to the curb, and then you're kind of sandwiched between a parking structure on one side and then El Camino moving on the other side. So there's a couple of strategies that we're proposing implemented. One manifests itself in the streetscape plan and the landscape architecture in terms of having curbside trees that separate the right-of-way for walking from the street, implementing minimum width sidewalks per city guidelines that create that comfortable, you know, side-by-side walking path. And then architecture along the side that's articulated in some way that, you know, isn't necessarily active retail mid-block, but will be on the corners so that it gives that kind of guideline and sightline coming in. But then additional architectural articulation along the facade that just gives these point of interest, in addition to the kind of breaks in the building. Right now, it's just a monolithic parking structure that extends all the way through. What we proposed in the plan is, as you all know and from looking at the plans, is a kind of quote-unquote 32nd Street and 33rd Street that give these more comfortable distances for pedestrians, that kind of give points along the way they can walk to and turn off if they want to as well. I'll stop there.
Still on this topic, so the project is 32 acres, and I think we heard several comments today about kind of thinking beyond the project's scope itself, but how it really integrates with the bordering areas. So things like Bank of America, Anna Furniture, the Bay Meadows community for easy flow and accessibility, also, you know, the TGIF space across the street. I think, you know, what are the future plans there in terms of integrating into the whole development area? And also with some of these aging blocks. So I'll stop there. I know that was a lot.
Lots of things to peel open there. Maybe I'll speak in terms of, you know, conceptually, the idea is seeing the fulfillment of what the city has laid out, honestly, in their Hillsdale Station area-specific plan of making this a node within the city. So thinking of Bay Meadows as one side of it, Hillsdale Reimagined as the other, that starts to redevelop and kind of the filling in in between, specifically with kind of the Anna's Furniture site and the TGI Friday site. I can invite David up here to speak. Those are outside of the applicant's ownership entity, so those are separately owned by the Bohannon Companies. David, maybe he's the best person to respond to that.
We certainly do have plans in the future to develop the former TGIF site, but I think our focus really is on creating the transformation in the center and that, you know, development of the site across the street will follow on that. So we're thinking about it, but we're not, you know, I think, you know, we want to focus on Hillsdale Reimagined first. We think that makes sense.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I know you're taking on a big venture right now, but I think the point I want to get across is that we're adding several thousand residents and, you know, office workers coming in every day, so connectivity from this new site into the Caltrain area will be especially critical. And so starting to think about how we, you know, really integrate the sections and make it more appealing is important and also safe. So, thank you.
Yeah.
And then, just on the topic of Caltrain, you know, given that the site is within half a mile of Caltrain and exempt from minimum parking requirements, what measures are being taken to encourage transit use, biking, walking, and car sharing?
Yeah, so a couple of things, some from a policy perspective, some from a design perspective. From a policy perspective, we do plan to submit a TDM plan as part of our application package, and that's forthcoming and for maybe the more general public or the community, that's a transportation demand management plan that lays out a series of strategies that the development or the property will implement to specifically reduce and measure the reduction of single occupancy vehicle trips that are generated to or from the site. Holistically, from the design perspective, and this is where I won't make Laura come up again, but I'll give GEL credit, they are a very people-forward urban design firm, and they kind of laid out the framework, so our block dimensions and how that site, the underpinning of the open spaces, how they're sized and how they're laid out in the plan, was specifically all done with the intent of how does someone experience a site, what keeps someone in a space and feeling comfortable in a space, what is visible beyond that encourages or entices someone to keep walking to the next block and see what's around the corner. So all of those things, in addition to, you know, just the literal specifics of it, there's an un-property bike lane and walking path that parallels Edison Street. Since we submitted our first submission, we've added an off-street cycling path along Hillsdale Boulevard on the property. The design for the streets are what we call complete streets, as I mentioned earlier, with, you know, raised pedestrian crossings that make that more comfortable, bike sharrows and narrow lanes that force cars and bikes to share, a lane which has also been proven to be a little bit safer, a creekside trail along Laurel Creek that provides connectivity where right now you're really just going against kind of garage access points. So all of those, in addition to, I think ultimately is just an activated ground floor lane, having stuff to look at, having front doors, having entries to homes, having entries to retailers, that alone creates that sense of safety for pedestrians and bikers and signals to people, this is not just a car-oriented place, but we're putting walkers and bikers on kind of the same parity as vehicles and drivers.
And just to wrap up this section, so some of the comments that I heard from the community today, so, you know, in terms of the architecture and the frontage of the architecture, you know, how can we really improve that? You know, making sure that there's like, you know, seeing more of the ground floor retail, and then, you know, just in general, I know you mentioned you're going to do a TDM study, but the traffic circulation and what the plan is there. I'm going to move to parking now. Several questions in this section. Can we also pull up slides six and seven of the staff report? So one thing I'd love clarity on is how many parking spots are envisioned in the development plan?
So in total, there are about, quote me off the top of my head, I would think there's 5,400 parking spaces total. Have to check the number that are in the plan. The way we assign the parking ratio, though...
Yeah, so just to confirm, there was, I think, 5,390, but then in the second submittal, it did go down.
Okay. The way that we, let me tell you, maybe what would be helpful is how we assign parking or how we determine those parking stalls is, essentially, this is one area where we're aligned with the community and aligned with the city in that, I think, as was stated earlier, technically, the developer is not required, not required to build any parking on the site. We think that would be absurd not to. It demands it, and, you know, we want to make sure that everything that we're building is marketable and usable in an appropriate way. And so there's an alignment on making sure that there's appropriate parking. So we look at kind of best-in-class, best-in-market from our experience as well. What are the parking ratios on either a per-square-footage basis or a per-unit basis that kind of adequately serve a transit-oriented spot like this, but one where we're still on the peninsula admittedly and a lot of people get around by cars? And so the way we generated those numbers was taking, for example, for retail space, applying a 4.0 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of retail, and then assessing what the retail area was, and then calculating out the number of parking spaces. For office, taking a 2.0 ratio per 1,000. For residential units in multifamily buildings, looking at a 1.15 parking stall per residential unit in the townhomes, treating it as two parking stalls per unit. And that kind of generated our calculation and our overall parking count.
Okay. So of that calculation, how many of those parking spots are instructure versus surface parking?
Most are instructure. There are on-street parallel parking, and I'm going to look to Mike to confirm this, but I believe there are 79 on, open, kind of on-street parallel parking. Little over 100, never mind, a little over 100. And all of the kind of uncovered spaces are all parallel parking on the sides of the street. There's no exposed surface parking lot. And, you know, those on-street parking spaces are really important. There are teaser parking for retailers, there are convenience parking for people who want to run, you know, quickly run inside, but at the same time, the desire was to not occupy a lot of the site with just exposed surface parking. That's not exactly an activating use and doesn't really take advantage of what's a really valuable piece of property in close proximity to transit and within this community.
Yeah, so there was a public commenter earlier tonight that talked about learning from Bay Meadows. So I do want to bring up the Wilson Meany Project. Obviously, it's a different developer, but a unique use case, I would say. Basically, when that development went in, it was designed, you know, with Caltrain in mind, then COVID happened, people in the community started parking, and now there's kind of, the parking ratios are off in that development relative to what the community is really needing. So I would just ask that we take a really hard look and try to think well beyond the even 20 years, but, you know, 40, 60, 80 years out, what that could look like. And I get, you know, it's hard to plan for that, but there's real-life, you know, use case of something not really working out the way it's envisioned. In line with questions on project phasing, what's your plan to phase in parking over the development cycle, and how many spots will show up when?
Yeah, so, good question. So we're still working through the phasing plan and, you know, credit to city staff for really pushing that as something that they've conveyed to us is of incredible importance to the community. We have, at this point, developed an initial phasing, phasing process, or phasing plan, tentative plan that we're excited to kind of share with the city and start working through. The idea is that each of the uses would be phased in a way where it would be, at least within that phase, parked appropriately for its phase of development. So there wouldn't be a kind of mismatch between, you know, a parking structure that's needed to support an occupied user not moving at the same time.
Okay, can I double-click there?
Yeah.
I'm going to jump around a little bit. So, in the past, at Open Houses, members of your development group, you know, had cited that the commercial portions of this project would be designed to be potentially converted to housing in the future. So have you thought about future parking, bike and pedestrian needs in the event of ending up with too much commercial space, and how will you account for future readiness with parking in those areas?
Right, offer a nuance potentially in terms of, what may have been misconveyed by members of our team is, there are two sites on the property that we, in the form of our submission being a master plan, that we had proposed could flex as either office or residential when they're constructed, rather than built out as an office building that could then down the road be converted to a residential building. The numbers reflected in our recent submission assumes one of those is a parking structure with ground-level retail and that the other one is an office building with self-supporting parking in it as well. So those were presented in the submission as an office use, but we do have kind of test fits and we've kind of established that that site could handle residential use as well. And so, you know, it happens before the buildings are constructed, for example.
Okay, so just to reconfirm what you're saying, that has been factored in. Okay, great. Just moving back to my questions. Okay. In addition to the Caltrain Station, what other forms of public transportation are you kidding, are you considering, for example, bus stops?
Yeah, so there actually are three bus stops along the property currently, one on Hillsdale, and then two on the El Camino frontage. And we are planning on maintaining those. They're actually pretty good bus stops right now in that they do have pullouts there right now, and they would interface with an improved kind of landscaping sidewalk, streetscape palette and improvements around there, which would make them more attractive.
And then, considering that the plan looks like it now includes a grocery store, along with other, you know, planned commercial properties, what's your plan to account for ride-sharing, delivery, and micro-mobility needs?
Yeah, it's a good question. This is one where we expect the plan to continue to evolve and get refined in the coming months, and even after we get completeness. We fully anticipate that we are going to need certain pullout parking stalls, usually the best practice is just converting on-street parallel parking to be temporary time-limited parking, for example, in addition to potentially allocating certain areas of the underground garage, for example, at the grocer, the main parking for that grocery store, in addition to the teaser parking at ground level, would actually be underground, a little bit similar to the Whole Foods in Bay Meadows, actually, in the way that that operates. So I think those are all good considerations that we should consider. We are at the early stages of that, and I think that's a conversation we'd engage in.
Okay, so just, I'm sure you follow San Mateo local politics, but bike lanes, ride-sharing, micro-mobility, you know, thinking about accessibility for seniors that maybe need to, you know, need more disability parking. Those are huge topics in this city, so we really need to have a detailed plan. The city staff actually has a great team that works on all of these issues. So again, I would encourage you guys to really get tight. Because people will want to know the details of that.
Yeah, we're amenable to talking through all those things.
Okay, early and often, please. Last question on this area or subject. So how much outreach has been conducted specifically to the residents of Edison Street and Marina Gardens Apartments who live directly behind Hillsdale Mall and adjacent to the project?
Yeah, so the original, and I will full disclosure, the involvement predated my involvement in the project, but at the original conceptualization of, let's think about what Hillsdale could look like in the future, and that original outreach, it actually started with actually David and one of the other colleagues on the team going door-to-door in the lanes and on Edison Street and dropping flyers and inviting people to informational sessions. So those residents were involved pretty early, and we've continued to reach out to them. One of the big moves that we made in kind of moving from some of the preferred concept to the preferred concept that ended up being submitted, I think I mentioned in the presentation, was we got a lot of positive reception from the truly immediate neighbors, you know, within two houses deep of saying, we'd love a frontage of a setback with bike lanes and a walking path and front doors of townhomes, so that we're looking at other housing rather than honestly looking at cars doing donuts in the parking garages sometimes at night. So we took that, we took that pretty seriously. We kind of valued their input there, and that's why we increased and actually doubled the acreage that we dedicated to that housing. And that's why we, we increased and actually doubled the acreage that we dedicated to that housing along the edge. So I just offer that as that's one of the ways that we've engaged with them. We also had meeting, a meeting with some of our immediate, we call them the edge line neighbors or the fence line neighbors. Early in February, right, or late February, I guess, right after we resubmitted and, you know, look forward to continuing to have that ongoing dialogue with them.
Yeah, and we'll get into the environmental impact, but just on the people right on Edison and Hillsdale Marina Garden, they are in such close proximity. You know, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure we're over communicating there because the construction, that's typically when we hear the most pain is the noise, the vibration, the dust. And so, you know, just making sure that they really understand that this could be going on for, you know, 10, 20 years. And that even during that span of development, we're communicating with those people that will be closest to those impacts. Absolutely.
You know, this is very important to me, those, those neighbors. And we did start there. That's how we began our community outreach. That was one of the first things they were concerned about. We've promised them, I have promised them, we will stay in touch with you. We will keep you apprised and informed of what we're doing and how it's going to happen and how we'll protect and do the best practice we can with regard to construction noise and dust and all that. I also have to say that, you know, construction along Edison won't last 10 years. You know, so they will, there will be construction there for maybe a couple of years, two, three years, but it's not the entire length of the construction for the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for clarifying that. Just one last question on the Hillsdale Gardens, and maybe this can be a follow-up. A resident sent an email today talking about that the Hillsdale Marina Garden Apartments actually park, use overflow parking where the Citibank is. And so I'd like to understand, you know, during the development phase, what will happen? And if what's, because what likely will happen in that case is then they'll be parking deeper into the neighborhood. And that will be, you know, a real risk within the neighborhood too, and concern will come from that.
Yeah, and I should clarify also, I think there was a comment made during public comment that maybe just to correct the record, the owner of the Hillsdale Mall doesn't have any association in terms of our ownership stake in the Hillsdale Garden Apartments. They were developed by the Bohannon Companies way back, you know, decades ago. But they're really out of, out of the applicant and developer and owner of this project's control. You know, the, what I can share is that those apartments were recently sold to a new operator who does plan to, from what we've heard, plans to operate some kind of increased oversight of the operations and you know, appropriateness of parking and spill over and stuff like that. And so it's going to be a matter of communicating with that operator as well.
Okay, and then I guess for the city team, like, we should take note of that and follow up with that resident or get more clarity from the Marina Hillsdale Garden Apartments.
That's something we can follow up with. Zach, did you have any further comment on that?
We can definitely, to our understanding, there isn't any formal agreement. This is just an informal practice that's evolved over the decades. But yeah, we can definitely look into it further.
Okay, thank you. Shifting gears, economic impact for business and retailers. So how much retail and community serving commercial space will remain or be added after redevelopment? And will local small businesses have opportunities to lease space in the new project?
Yeah, okay, so in the, for the first question about how much space remains, so dividing the site into a couple of different categories. So the North Block has 200,000 square feet in operation right now of retail that remains in place. You know, is, is, we perceive being very well received by the community. The, what we call the central block, which is what everyone, I think colloquially, would just consider the mall. That has about 222,000 square feet of actual tenanted retail excluding the department stores. And so where we get, I think where, where we've probably created our own confusion to a certain extent is when we've classified the existing square footage, we've included the atrium space, the big corridors, the covered parking, all as part of that square footage. But when we look at what's actually existing there outside of the department stores, it's about 222,000 square feet. Compared to what's proposed in the future plan, there's, proposal includes about 150,000 square feet. So combined 150K plus the 200K in the North Block, about 350 total. And, and the, the project is designed to operate as a holistic kind of neighborhood or district. So in conjunction with the North Block. And, yeah.
So just, so I'm understanding, am I hearing that this is going to be net neutral to what the mall is today in terms of retail capacity?
It'll be, it'll be a little bit less, but I don't think it's going to be magnitudes less. And I think the, the, the flip side of that is it'll be higher quality retail and retail, it's really kind of positioned to succeed in the future. A lot of the retailers, and this is where Northwood lends a lot of their expertise, because they, they do operate a lot of retail throughout the country. You know, what they hear from retailers all the time is they're looking for a Main Street experience and they're looking for a certain number of storefront doors in the property. And so one of the challenges, for example, of the North Block is it has that outdoor oriented experiential orientation to the retail there, but it doesn't have enough total exterior facing doors or kind of Main Street facing doors to attract the really significant soft good retailers. And so, you know, when, when we're programming kind of the right size of the retail, it's less an absolute square footage that we're trying to program than a what is going to meet the market and what's going to meet the next generation of retailers that are going to put in roots here and really kind of stay and be a resource for the community. I can answer your, your other question if you want me to, which was about, I think, local.
Businesses having opportunities.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, the, it's, it's way in the future in terms of when we're programming exactly what retailers here, but I think the intent is the best retailer should be that most appropriately, you know, serve the market, generate productive revenue or popular, et cetera, will locate here.
Okay. And are there plans for temporary retail activation, like pop-ups, food trucks or local markets during construction?
So in this context, we haven't, we haven't thought about that explicitly in the context of some of the interim phasing, but I think the way we've purposely tried to design the phase is that the entirety of the retail experience doesn't disappear all at the same time. And we are trying to phase the project so that, for example, the townhomes along Edison Street get constructed first. The actual central portion of the mall can actually continue to operate just without the parking structure that serves it to the west. And then even as the, as the project continues to advance, different parts of the mall could remain operational in some way. I will, I will say that just from a philosophical, how do you create value to the developer, to the community, to future tenants here? That Hillsdale Center, that's kind of just south of 31st and, and the base of E1 are really critical for the placemaking. And really, I mean, honestly, retail doesn't make a ton of money in its own right, but what it does is it provides value to the auxiliary uses that are there. And I think having that in place pretty early in the project is kind of a a key goal of the project team in order to really create that sense of, hey, this is an exciting destination in retail here. So I, I think it won't be as, my long-winded point is maybe that it won't be as long before there already are starting to be new retail opportunities pop up on the site even relatively early in the phasing.
And can you share how you're communicating with existing tenants? You know, and mall workers, for example, about the phasing out of the existing mall with this incoming development?
Yeah, so the phasing part of it is newly, as you can all imagine, it's, it's an incredibly complicated and complex project. And we've had to kind of try to think through, how does the parking align with the future development? What happens? There's an underground truck tunnel that runs under the whole, the whole facility. So we've just recently, we wanted to first feel a little bit more comfortable and confident in the actual concept plan of the entire proposal. And then the next step was, okay, now how do we start breaking that down and cracking it into the pieces that move through phasing? So we have not yet conveyed the phasing to tenants. The way we've been keeping in touch with tenants, though, is we have been communicating and there's a, there's an internal mall newsletter that goes to the existing tenants and employees. And we've been placing updates in that from the kind of development team through the operations team of the mall.
Okay. So I know you mentioned grocery. What other, like, retail tenants or amenities are planned to serve residents and surrounding neighborhoods?
So a couple of them off the top of my head that are very easy to see in the North Block are food and beverage tenants, which we heard a lot from some of our community outreach as well of people expressing that they like, they didn't want to lose them all because they like being able to go there to go eat at, whether it was the Cheesecake Factory or Paul Martin's or any one of the, you know, the dining terrace, which also still remains just as, as is an intact. So those certainly already baked in from the beginning. A lot of the residential buildings, which doesn't necessarily serve outside residents, but serves the residents on the property, because they also have, you know, there's going to be more need for local services from the residents that are on board will have in-building residential amenities, most likely. So a dry cleaning, pickoff, drop-off area, package delivery, bike storage, stuff like that, those kind of local amenities that serve those residents as well.
And then, you know, I was going to make a comment about this, so I'll make it now. You know, you mentioned the regional draw and really wanting, you know, to continue having this future area that was once the mall continue to be a regional draw. So I guess, how are you guys thinking about the project and maintaining the Hillsdale regional retail role consistent with the station area plan?
Yeah, so I think just the overall, looking at the size of the retail area, the square footages that I cited earlier, put it very much it kind of in the sweet spot of, you know, strong regional retail centers that do bring that draw. And again, the comparison with Santana Row is just an easy one to draw just because of most people in this area kind of can envision what that feels like in terms of the amount of ground floor retail. So that's the level of retail we're talking about. This is not an insignificant, you know, one or two stores here or there. So that's a component of it. And really, the open spaces play a key role. So the idea that a regional draw is activated by retail can be based on retail, but isn't solely based on, isn't solely retail and also can spill over into public spaces that have events and have programming and are just places for the community to gather and kind of the third spaces. You know, we, we talk internally, we joke that we walk around the mall a lot. And, you know, oftentimes we see people carrying coffee cups or, you know, drink cups or takeout food, but we actually don't see as many, you know, bags where they've bought soft good retails as maybe in decades past or maybe outside of the holiday season. And so thinking about what is it that makes the mall a regional draw right now in addition to just purely the retail? It's the place to gather outside of one's home in kind of a a neutral space to a certain extent.
Okay. What is the project's projected job creation or tax revenue impact compared to existing mall operations? Can you share that data?
Yeah, so we've done an initial fiscal impact study and we're open. I know the city is planning to do a peer review of it, which we certainly welcome. Right now, we can maybe actually, Elaine, if it's possible, pull up one of the appendix slides again. Looking at, it basically doubles the revenue, tax revenue generated from the mall. So I, off the top of my head, I, I think it's about 5 million. And it increases to 10.6 million in overall revenue. Then we looked at, well, what are the additional services? And this was brought up by several speakers earlier as well. Well, you know, the additional development is going to require additional fire service, additional police service, all of those things. So we netted out what we projected or what we didn't project. Our consultant EPS projected were additional use of city services as well. And got to a net annual increase to the general fund of somewhere between 1.27 and $2.2 million annually. Additional kind of net, net benefit to the city's general fund. And the reason we have that range is, one is the lower end of the range is comparing to the mall as it exists today in this moment of time. But then the alternative was comparing it to looking 10, 20 years out in the future. Let's say some of the large tenants don't even exist as corporations anymore in general. You have a little bit of a decline kind of current condition. And so that's the reason for the range.
Yeah, so I, I think the thing is, like, I hear you and that's great. Maybe this is for the city staff and the entire council to think sharply about, but, you know, as this development is, you know, being done, you know, and thinking about the phasing impacts, how is that going to impact the city's sales tax base over the next 20 years? So we need to start thinking about like the economic strategies in terms of potential loss and how we offset that in the interim. And I would like, you know, Bohannon's group to be a partner with that phasing component for, you know, economic impact. So.
Definitely.
Yeah, and, you know, would love to dig deeper here.
For sure.
For sake of time, we can move on, but I think you guys will do a fiscal impact. And I just wanted to really, you know, just echo. There was a lot of community sentiment tonight about, you know, wanting to continue to have this be a center of excellence. I believe based on what you're saying, it will be, but we want that vibrant retail mix too. And to really continue to have that draw. So I can't underscore that enough.
We're completely on the same page.
Thank you for answering my questions. Moving on to environmental. Okay. How will this project address climate goals such as all-electric design, tree canopy and water conservation while ensuring livable, family-friendly housing?
Yeah, so we plan to fully comply with CalGreen standards, which for anybody who's built in California recently, it's kind of the best of the best in terms of efficiency and with San Mateo's own REACH codes, for example, in terms of moving towards all-electric. I would anticipate there's going to be solar panels on the roofs of these buildings. You know, the most water efficient features will be implemented here. You know, there's, there's little things that goes under the radar too, even insulation. It's going to have QII insulation in the residential buildings, for example, which is less sexy, but also results in much less energy use for heating and cooling, for example. You know, there are studies that show the construction of new buildings as compared and operations of new buildings as compared to buildings that are even 25 years old have a substantially lower energy usage. On top of that, I would say the biggest carbon emitter is vehicle transportation in the country. And so it's location, we can do all the things that possible to the buildings and we will, but it's really, it's location not only next to transit, but in a walkable community where people can serve their daily needs in a local, walkable or bikeable way is probably the most significant thing we could really do. Green, you know, LEED, LEED certification gives the most value to the location of a project for that exact reason that it actually has the most impact.
And then what environmental review path are you pursuing? The exemption or a full EIR?
So I don't want to be presumptuous. It is the city's discretion as the lead agency in terms of what path we pursue for CEQA or what path is pursued by the city for CEQA for the project. We have engaged with a consultant and we've done our own analysis and we do feel like that a 15183 streamlining path is appropriate for the project. We're proud that, I didn't mention this earlier, but we are proud that we, we feel that the plan is in conformance with the city's general plan 2040, which went through a lot of review, study, discussion and support within the community. And we've tried to tailor the project specifically so it could fall within that. The whole purpose of streamlining is it basically says there wasn't a full EIR done for that general plan and that this project can then take advantage of that work already being done. That's not to say that all of the technical studies that need to be done for the project to show that it's appropriately in conformance with the EIR, that there are no negative impacts that don't have mitigation measures already contemplated in the general plan, won't be done. We, there will.
But your project proposes a 20-year development plan, which is longer than the current general plan 2040. So how will you ensure you're adhering to environmental impact changes? And policy changes if you go past the city's current general plan and choose to tear off? And we do need an answer to that.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to share. We've, we've actually, as we've developed the phasing plan, we've been able to tighten our timeline and we kind of looked at it of what is realistic for the timeline. And so one of the things that we're saying is that we believe the project can actually build by 2040, which is a shorter timeline than we've previously expressed. Now that we've been able to actually dig in with a preliminary, some contracting input, preliminary phasing, utility work and, and analysis and feel that we can complete the project by 2040.
When do you anticipate breaking ground?
Well, it's going to be a lot of factors that, that go into that, but we would say around 2029.
Okay, so that gives you 11 years, but if you don't make it in that 11-year cutoff, then that will trigger several reviews. If you go, so I think there needs to, we all need to drive for more clarity on that.
Yeah, I think phasing is one of the things that we've heard consistently and phasing in timelines that I think is, is an appropriate next conversation and kind of deep dive among both the applicant team and the city.
So speaking of studies, what studies are underway for utilities, water supply, traffic, et cetera?
So part of this is under the purview of city staff. So I'm, to a certain extent, I want to be differential to them.
Do you want to answer?
We have engaged an environmental consultant who's already on contract at David J. Powers to start looking at it.
Okay. So on that note, if our So on that note, if our consultant comes back with a different recommendation, will the Bohannon Group commit to sitting down and revisiting the topic of a full EIR versus exemption?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can't, we can't pursue a streamlined path if there are certain negative impacts that aren't contemplated in the general plan. I think I am pretty optimistic that we will, we will be able to get to that point collaboratively. But yes, I mean, we have to, we have to conform with the requirements of certain CEQA paths.
Okay. How will construction be managed to minimize noise, dust and disruption over multi-decade build-out?
So this is, this is kind of a next topic as well for us to dive into, just as we have with the phasing. And all I, what I can say right now, what I can say right now is we've heard the importance of mitigating construction. We absolutely intend to. It's going to be impossible to 100% mitigate the impact of construction, but there are certain best pack practices that we plan to implement. And one of the things that we're working on, and we have a meeting with city staff actually this Wednesday, is to do, we're, we're going to share truly a first pass at construction logistics. So it's everything from where do truck routes go, where does staging happen within the site? And to start talking through some of those details because it's those little things that are going to make the difference.
Okay, so I just want to give you some use case examples. So for example, at Mariners Island, which is in my district, when we did the sewage treatment facility, you know, there were some concerns with light pollution. We had to put some screens up. I know folks mentioned HVAC systems. So at Harbor Town in my district, there's been issues with the Longfellow Development having the HVAC systems on rooftops. That's created noise. People have had to, you know, request screens. So I want to make sure all those little details are being considered as well. I did just want to follow up. As you know, the city faced significant flooding in 2023 and that affected thousands of properties. This project does border Laurel Creek, which is a major waterway protecting the city from flooding. So can you please explain how this project might, you know, impact Laurel Creek? And steps you can avoid, you know, or steps you'll be taking to avoid damage to the creek?
And is your question, just to clarify, is your question for the full build-out condition or during construction? Sorry, for full, for full build-out or during construction, impacts on Laurel Creek?
So, and I'll give you an example here too. So with the flooding, and this is an adverse impact that may have occurred from the Wilson Meany Bay Meadows development. There are some residents who believe that the reason the creek overflowed in the village is because there was residual silt debris, dirt that went into the creek and into the floodwater system. So I want to ensure that that doesn't happen because Laurel Creek is one of the most, you know, critical needs in terms of the safety and security of the city and the residents that live here.
Yeah, so from a full up, I'll, I'll kind of touch both then. From a full out, filled out perspective, we, we do plan to treat all stormwater through a C3 plan that was submitted as part of the package. It's pretty strictly regulated by the state. And so the intent is that treatment happens on site. Nothing gets, nothing gets dumped into the creek from a rain event going forward during construction. I can't speak to exactly what happened potentially with Bay Meadows in terms of construction debris, but that sounds like a, a worst-case bad practice scenario that shouldn't be happening on a construction site, that the appropriate swaddles and stormwater were required to propose a SWIP plan yearly during any stage of construction, which we take pretty seriously, which is designed specifically to preclude contamination or debris going into wastewater or creeks.
Two more questions. That's it. So currently, the Hillsdale Shopping Center is well-known in our community as a safe place for pre-teens and young teens to hang out and meet with friends. Does this development include any similar safe spaces for this demographic?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the retail center or the, you know, Hillsdale Center and Hillsdale Square and many of the open spaces are designed to be exactly that. And I don't think they're designed to exclude kind of pre-teens in any way in the same way that many people hang out in the, the North Block Plaza or some of the retail places there, the dining terrace, that all still remains and is just interconnected to more of this. So yes, I think that, I think we, we hope that those same groups of people are using this space as well.
And then the city of San Mateo recently published a report about how a number of our facilities like community centers and public pools need significant repairs. As a gesture of goodwill to the community, would you consider donating funds to renovate some of our community centers and pools so that younger members of San Mateo can continue to have a safe, affordable place to hang out?
I can't speak specifically off top, off the cuff on, on those particular funding needs, but noted and heard.
Yeah, I think, you know, we'd really appreciate if you guys could commit to something as a gesture of, of good faith. And I do appreciate you taking time to answer all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to council or Deputy Mayor Lorraine, at the start of this, I was going to ask a question of staff and I, I'd like to do it now. Could the city staff please explain, based on California's laws, the HAA and the SB 330, what provisions are taken away from the city on a project like this? So obviously there's going to be some limitations. And as we just heard, you know, in large projects like this, normally there would be community benefit. And in this case, they're not obligated to do so. Could we get some feedback for the community as to what an HAA and SB 330 project mean as terms of what, what the city can and can't do?
So I'll have our community development team go ahead and start off. And then if we have to go to the city attorney, he's also available.
Through the mayor, so under HAA and SB 330, the city can only impose objective quantifiable written standards that's published for public review. For example, general plan and also all the adopted plan policies. And then other than that, we cannot use common practice to impose community benefit, although it's highly encouraged and we recommend the applicant to voluntarily provide that community benefit, given the councils and public's input. However, our general plan does build some of the policies for community goods. We're trying to work with applicants to be compliant with the general plan policy, especially if they're seeking a tier off of a general plan for streamlining CEQA. And then consistent with the general plan is a mast.
I'll just add that, you know, as you saw in the presentation, I mean, state law in the Housing Accountability Act has been around for a while. It limits local discretion. And you know, once a project is considered a housing development as defined under state law, then there are certain restrictions on what the city can and can't require. We can require compliance with local objective, quantifiable written standards. But also state law has changed. The definition of a housing development has changed as of January 1st of this year. And this preliminary application was submitted shortly after that. And HCD, as Elaine mentioned previously, weighed in and concluded that this project qualified as a housing development. So what that means is the kind of requests that maybe the city could have made in the past and requiring, say, a development agreement, as was the case in Bay Meadows, that's, that's not really on the table right now. So there's much more, the city's discretion is much more limited today than it may have been in a prior iteration of this project in, in a, in a different time period.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, Deputy Mayor, you, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, take it away.
I'll try my best not to ask any questions that Councilmember Speer Kukadzki already asked, but that may be a little more challenging than I initially anticipated. Okay. So the majority of my questions are for the applicant. Thank you.
I'll just come up here and then be at the ready.
You know, and despite what I said, I'm just going to try my best. I, I believe this has not been fleshed out as much as I imagine people might like, so I'm going to try. I, I feel like you have been asked about the phasing plan and project timeline. We've heard a bit that the project is now considering trying to end by 2040. I heard through some of your answers that there's a consideration, and please correct me later if not, but of starting, you know, with the Edison townhomes being part of the earlier piece with regard to it, like one of the earlier phases and also potentially the grocer, the E1 and the Hillsdale Square. I guess I, I just want to ask if you, if there's anything else that you feel you could share at this point to the public with regard to where you, what you've landed on so far?
I can, I can share if, if, if folks are willing to take the time. We do have a preliminary phasing plan in the appendix. It's at the very end of the lane. Sorry to keep making you pull, pull stuff up. This is kind of a first cut, like I said, this is a, a starting point. This is a place that we want to start talking with city staff much more. They have, I would give them credit, they're the reason we have one prepared at this point, since it's not part of technically the submission checklist, you know, published submission checklist for the city. But we did understand that this was a really important item. And Elaine, if we could just scroll back a couple of slides. Keep going back. It should be obvious when it starts if you go back. Should be one that's, yeah, okay, next, sorry, next one, one more. So what we've done is we put together a preliminary phasing plan. And so it takes the 12 parcels that were contemplated in the vesting tentative map. We think there's some, as we started digging into this a little bit more, that some of the parcels inherently want to move forward at the same time. You know, a lot of, I'll just give some context of a lot of the reason for flexibility in phasing or the kind of the timeline is not necessarily that, you know, the project is going to just be a continuous construction project for those 10 or 11 years. But there are market cycles that we're reactive to as well in terms of getting finance, in terms of the market for tenants for certain of the product types. And so that's what's really causes to a certain extent that kind of back and forth or flexibility of when different parts of the project start. That said, we have come up with a plan that we think is pretty, at least a good first pass and a reasonable and realistic first pass. So it would most likely start with the demolition of the parking structure along Edison. And then Elaine, if I could have you advance one slide. Within the construction of the townhomes that front Edison right there, with the remaining portion of the site likely uses a temporary park, surface parking to continue to support the mall, for example. Then the next phase would be likely the demolition of the southern portion and kind of western portion of the mall, maintaining the department stores in place and as well maintaining a portion of the mall that kind of touches the dining terrace up at the top. Next slide. With the construction of two multifamily residential buildings, W2 and W3. Next slide, please. Then the demolition of the kind of front of the mall, the Nordstrom's building and a portion of the parking structure along El Camino. That parking structure is oriented differently, so it could actually still potentially function in a, in a partial operation where you just lop off basically the northern portion of it. Then next slide, these, these would likely all move forward together. They're kind of critical in making that sense of place and that kind of extension of the North Block and that retail center. So that would be the E1 office building, the C1 retail center, and then the C3 multifamily residential building. Next slide, demolition of the rest of the kind of central block, I'll call it. Next slide, construction of kind of from east to west, although planned top to, to planned middle of the E2 office building and the C2 Hillsdale Square. And then the, it's not labeled, but the C4 residential building there, next slide. Likely then moving a partial demolition of the South Block west of Trader Joe's. So basically the bank and the extra parking over on that side. And then next slide, please, construction of another multifamily residential building there. Next slide, please. Construction of office and parking structure with ground level retail of E3 and C5. And then next slide, demolition of the remainder of the South Block, next slide. Construction of two office buildings there. Last slide, construction of a residential building on S4, which is a 36th Avenue facing, a fronting parcel, which honestly may move at a different pace because it's, it, it, it doesn't have the complexity of the rest of the site does in terms of interconnectedness of it. So this is, this is really outside of the resubmission package. It wasn't included. We're looking forward to discussing it further. There's going to be a ton more refinement that comes to it, but we, we understood that we needed to start putting together a plan and putting forth our most likely scenario.
I appreciate that very much. And I will just note for what it's worth that I am pleased firstly to see that it appears that the initial phase starts by building some of the residential buildings. In fact, the first two phases are housing focused. And I'm, I'm happy to see that, you know, frankly, the Trader Joe's site is one of the last to be targeted. So that may at least allow for what we have to remain for quite some time. I guess I'm just curious, this could be a staff question, it could be an applicant question, but how, how, how flexible can you continue to be with this phasing? At what point, I, I imagine, of course, when you start one of the phases, you'll be fairly locked into that one. But, you know, how, I, I, I'm curious, like, how, how much could this change once you begin phase one?
I think inherently for the project to succeed, it does need some level of flexibility. And again, this is where, where, we're also at the mercy of, of a broader market in terms of what's moving forward. And, you know, there, there is a certain cadence to pacing things out in terms of, you don't want to deliver all 1,400 housing units at the, you know, on the market at the same time. You just don't have the leasing capacity to even fill them, even, even with a need that exists right now in the community. You just can't get enough people who are truly moving in. And so there is a, there are some kind of natural market organizing frameworks that would cause things to move in the same way. The same time, if, if an office tenant, a really exciting tenant came in and said, we're looking to locate in San Mateo, we're moving here and we've got a huge appetite for office space. You know, maybe E1 and E2 and the associated blocks with those all move together at this, in the same phase and they're not necessarily sequential. So I think there does need to be some amount of flexibility allowed. And I think that's, it's going to be ongoing discussion how we, you know, how we, how we continue to update. And we also need to continue to dig into this phasing alone. This is kind of our preliminary pass. We're still, we're admittedly still digging in as well in terms of some of the logistics of, of the phase we proposed.
Of course, I, I appreciate that. I think though, I, I just want to ask that, given that, right? Given that flexibility would be beneficial in this longer-term multi-phase project, but also given we've heard from many people in the public today who want to ensure the focus is prioritizing housing. We've heard concerns about how much office is included and how that balance can be maintained. Staff mentioned a phrase that they were interested in, building residential portions concurrently and proportionately with the non-residential components. I think part of that, you know, I can, I can, I believe and I can understand how that, you know, is important for, based on this definition of this being a housing project and that having to do with there being a certain amount of net new residential development to go with the other uses. And so I guess, given public sentiment and understanding that this may change, would you commit to building, you know, would you commit to something that is similar to what we heard from staff about building residential portions concurrently and proportionally with non-residential components? Even if, for example, this phasing were to change?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to study our own phasing in, in more detail on this. So what I can say is that the, the team is 100% committed to building the housing that's included in the plan. And there's a kind of market, natural market forcing mechanism in that, you know, it, it just doesn't make financial sense, honestly, to leave half of the site undeveloped if housing isn't built. It's just a, it's a poor business move, honestly, above and beyond anything else. And so I think there is a natural forcing mechanism that will, will, will cause the different. that will, will, will cause the different components of the project to be built when they can be built. And by the end of 2040, to artificially put certain pressures could potentially jeopardize the feasibility of taking advantage of moments in time when there are opportunities to move forward with different, you know, other elements of the project at that time. Real estate products move at different cycles. For sales homes even, for example, are sometimes in demand at different times than rental homes are in demand. And, you know, financing lenders don't always, don't always, aren't always sympathetic to, sorry, we can't do this because you have to fund a product that is not in demand at this particular moment. But what I would say is that there is a natural incentive to build all of the project out in its entirety as proposed.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I think I want to try and keep on the housing topic and note that I heard from a number of members of the public who wished that there might be more housing in this project. And some are concerned with, again, the mix and, and of course, there's, there, we've, there's been some negative concerns about office and how much office. And, you know, I think more broadly, you know, the intensity of employees and their uses in this project in the overall mix. You mentioned there are a couple of remaining sort of flexible spaces. I believe those are C5 and S2. And I think in your discussion with councilmember Sverko Kuditsky, you mentioned there still may remain some flexibility. I'm guessing with S2 to be either an office, maybe focused or residential focused, given what you've heard tonight. And I, are you, you know, would you, would you consider making S2 more residential focused?
I think the, the short answer is we're always interested in flexibility because it allows us to, to make the decision that makes sense of the, you know, we can, we can test the market a little bit and then, and then appropriately react. It depends the amount of flexibility that's allowed. If, you know, if a commitment is needed now versus if there is that kind of ongoing flexibility, I think it probably changes the, the response to a certain extent. And there are other, you know, in terms of the, just generally the response more housing, completely get it. And there were trade offs that we made, for example, on, we, we felt it was really important to scale to the neighborhood in terms of the Edison Townhomes and even the S3 parcel that is contemplated as a multifamily building, but a lower multifamily building that is, is further in towards the middle of the site. And so we're, we're constantly weighing that balance of housing production versus transitioning to the neighborhood comfortably versus meeting the desire for, you know, a strong regional retail center to honestly, the, the office and the employment that kind of helps with this mix, both from a project perspective, but even literally in terms of activating the spaces at different times a day and really making it a true regional draw and destination and allowing those retailers to survive. So I think, short answer, we still see S2 as a flexible site. We're open to keeping that flexibility to go to residential if that seems like a path that's feasible to, to take.
Okay. I did have at least one question about the grocery. And I think this can maybe be expanded to include some of what I think we've heard tonight about an interest in local businesses, options for small businesses and so on. We, as I believe you know, lost a couple groceries downtown over the last decade. Those developments, the, you know, there were developments being considered and are still in process. One has been completed. Those developments both expressed interest in keeping a grocer in the new developments, but the finished one hasn't been able to get one. And I'm concerned that the same may end up being true of the other one. I think with the finished one, we've heard that the, the, it's, it's, frankly, they're having difficulty getting any retail tenants. They have some and they're working on more and it's not impossible. But I think there have been challenges and we don't have plans to have a grocer. So what might you be working on? What is Hillsdale Reimagine planning to avoid that type of situation from occurring here?
Yeah, that's where, and I feel like, not to repeat myself, but that's where having that built in kind of catchment basement of the number of residential units that are proposed here and the employment here, that really does honestly play a significant role in having to succeed. And, you know, the, the North Block right now is doing better in its performance than the Central Block, for example. But there's, there's empty space that the Bohannon companies, you know, went through a process to convert the use to, to an office use. The hope is that, you know, if this had been in existence at that time, that, that space actually could have succeeded as a retail space and that, you know, maybe in the future it even converts back. But I think that's the, maybe the message if we could convey that the, the housing and the office and the retail are all kind of interconnected. It's hard to separate each component and just say like move this one this way or this way, because they actually, they do kind of play off each other in a dynamic and a proportion that, that allows, I think would provide more guarantee that the retail that's here will actually thrive and function and attract the retailers that we want to be here.
Okay. I certainly hope so. There was some discussion about, well, we certainly heard from the public about El Camino Real and how some of the ground level along El Camino Real currently appears to have mainly the back end of parking lots, E2, I think E3, which is actually kind of like today's existing conditions. Primary entrances appear to be inside, but as has been noted, the Hillsdale Station area plan, Grand Boulevard Initiative and other documents appear to expect more activation here. So what, what in this plan could meet those policies? Will the current proposal comply with those plans and documents?
Yeah. So I think on, on El Camino, I think there are architectural treatments that could provide that activation. And I think it is, it is helpful to remember what that stretch of El Camino feels like with the trench kind of highway running through it. It doesn't have, it's, it's pretty far separated from the other side of El Camino as well in terms of where the old train station site or the TGI Friday site is, in terms of just its physical distance. And it doesn't have a, as much of a, the kind of scale that's usually necessary for retailers to thrive there. We have, we have certainly proposed and are shown in the images. And if you look in the, in the plans of taking advantage of the corners where there are, where there is visibility right there. I think in terms of the architectural treatment, I think there are other methods that can be used to activate that space. So there still can be glass. There still can be display windows. There still can be secondary lobbies, things like that, that still make it feel visually like, like there's, there's stuff happening there. But most likely, again, this is with the feasibility of retail actually surviving. It wants to be on the other side. I think with the, in terms of the conformance with the policy documents, you know, we do plan to conform with them. I do, I do think there is a, an exemption or a clarification in, in the Hillsdale Station area specific plan that does contemplate primary entrances for the building or primary lobbies not actually being on El Camino for this stretch of El Camino. And I think it was probably done because recognizing the condition of that street frontage right there would be challenging to locate.
Thank you. And you mentioned long, larger sidewalks in this area. Do you have a sense of about how, why they might be in that stretch?
I'm going to ask one of our designers for that. Nicole, do you know the width of the sidewalks along El Camino? Or Laura, if you did. What's that? Six feet. Plus, plus the parkway on the, so the actual walking width is six feet. And then there's a continuous planting strip that then buffers the sidewalk from the back of curb of the actual street as well.
Okay.
Through the mayor. I was wondering if I could just call attention to the fact that it is 10:40 and we have staff that have been here all day. So I just was wondering if we could just call attention to time limitations on comments and questions for at this time.
Duly noted.
Through the mayor. Appreciate that. And I take full accountability. I had a lot of questions. I think this is a really important project and we should make sure that everybody on the council, you know, gives proper attention to it, even if that means the meeting runs long. And I understand the impact to staff on that. But this is a big deal. It's 32 acres of San Mateo. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. See, I will try to cut some questions though. Well, I'll just make a quick comment with regard to retail uses and draw, because we actually made a decision earlier tonight to postpone an economic development plan that we're working on. And it happened to indicate an interest in pursuing more entertainment based activity in our city. And to me, I, what I feel like I'm hearing is that could be part of this retail draw. I'm sure you were already thinking of it. And I believe even mentioned it in parts, but I just wanted to highlight that because I do think that could be useful and we can keep that in mind. I'll also just mention, because I was going to mention that, I think the North Block is, is doing well on that in, in a number of offerings that are activity based. And so I feel like that's a good start. And with something like a Hillsdale Square, we, we have an opportunity for that. I did want to ask about childcare opportunities at this, at this, at this site so far that you have explored.
So we, full disclosure, we haven't, we haven't explored childhood, I'm sorry, childcare facilities at the site up to now. There are a fair number of licensing restrictions that make them sometimes challenging to place in mixed use developments like this based on required enclosed outdoor space that's allocated purely for those uses or drop off and stuff like that. But we can certainly explore it. We haven't, we haven't to date looked at that.
Okay. I would definitely, I would definitely encourage at least exploration of it. I think we've discussed the connection to 31st lot, so I will maybe hold off. I did want to ask about the, the timeline of our process we're a part of tonight and, and the application process, because as you, as you've seen and heard, the public had a lot to say and councilmembers have a lot of questions. And staff has been working very hard on the, the latest application. They brought forth a number of issues. You know, I, I hope we can get together on all these and sort it all out within the next couple, you know, potentially by November 17. But I think, you know, I, I think there's a possibility that we may need more time. And I wanted to just take this opportunity to ask you if you'd be interested in considering working with the city on perhaps even a bit more time. We have this one final round. We're two out of three already right now. Given we're already halfway though, it seems like a lot to ask out of both you, the applicant and the city to complete a high quality project this size in that time. And we would all like to get it right. So is there an appetite to, for Hillsdale Reimagine to potentially negotiate with the city and an opportunity for maybe like a potential fourth round just to, you know, keeping the SB 330 sort of entitlements and benefits, but, but just giving us one more round, for example?
I'll summarize it quickly and say, we're, we're always up to, we're always up to discuss proposed, anything that the city wants to propose on that front. We'll certainly entertain it, consider it, see if it's the best move. So yes is the primary answer of yes, we're open to considering something. If the city proposes something, no guarantees, obviously, depending on the context. What I will offer though is beyond completeness with SB 330 completeness, there is, we don't see that as the end of the process, that we, we really do, we, we don't think that everything for the project needs to be done in this completeness period. SB 330 actually is pretty explicit about the things that do need to be complete versus leaving all the other things separate. And so I think that's also just a, we certainly buy into that philosophy as well, that there, there are certain things. Not everything does need to be fully resolved because this isn't the end of the process and the end of the project evolution at this point.
Thank you. Okay. Just a couple more questions, I think. We talked about potential, we talked about housing. I guess I did want to just touch on the, the below market rate current mix. If I recall correctly, I think we have 15% in the low sort of area median income for the rental apartments and moderate, 15% moderate of the for sale townhomes. But, you know, we heard a lot of folks indicating their interest in as much affordable housing as possible, of course. That's very important. And it, it seems to me, in discussing the current application with staff, that this is, you know, 15% for the, the project and what it's getting for its office space, et cetera, the density bonuses and whatnot is, is, is the minimum. And in fact, I heard that there's even a bit of a fractional piece to get to the 15 that's, that right now is being considered to be paid in, in a fee as opposed to finding one more unit. And I'm just curious, given what you've heard, given your knowledge of the, the priority of, of housing and affordable housing, if, if anything about the project could change to make that different, could we see more affordable? Or, or would you be interested in considering a deeper level of affordability with perhaps either of these?
So I'll just give one clarification in terms of the, the in lieu fee. Those are, those are used for, for real fractional, as I know you know how the, how the formula works. But so for example, on the townhomes, it's in, in lieu of a point one unit of affordable unit. And so there, as you can probably imagine, there's a, there's, there's a huge financial hit to the development and the feasibility by, you know, rounding up a point one affordable unit to a full affordable unit. I think we're really excited about the amount of affordable housing that we're able to provide here, that there aren't that many other projects that have a, you know, in the pipeline that are contemplating or proposing between 200 and 250 affordable housing units, you know, it's all a trade off. You know, deeper levels of affordability, you know, make other portions of the project less feasible or, or require. So noted. I don't think I can commit one way or the other up here right now on the fly.
Yep. Okay. Final question for me. Will you be engaging with our local building trades unions, many of whom were in the audience tonight, and, and their apprenticeship training programs? Can you describe whether you've engaged with any of them yet or how and when you, you might do that?
I'm going to take a break for a second and give David the microphone.
Yes. No. We have, we have met with the trades, actually a couple of times and just recently. You know, this project will produce a lot of union jobs. It's, it's early for us to be making commitments, but I think, you know, this, this is a great project with many jobs, many union jobs. We have a history with the unions and we did sign an agreement at the North Block. I'm, I'm not sure, honestly, we'll do that again, but we will work with the, we will definitely work with the trades. I agreed just the other day to go visit, visit the new training center in Pleasanton or somewhere. So it's, it's a conversation ongoing.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I will keep comments brief. I will just thank everybody who came, of course, those of us who are still with us, everybody who gave public comment and shared concerns and asks of this important project. I did want to thank the Hillsdale Reimagine team. I did want to thank the Hillsdale Reimagined team, everybody who's here for, for coming, for spending hours answering questions and, and for volunteering to be here in the first place. I do think that's a sign of, of being a good neighbor and, and wanting to do the right thing. And I just want to make sure that we can continue to work together as we get through this process so that that remains the case and that the city staff and council and the public can, can feel that way about the project and, and the development throughout. I think I did just want to, you know, indicate my interest in, in potentially increasing the amount of housing and the affordability wherever possible. An interest in exploring childcare opportunities where possible with engaging with local building trades and unions and apprenticeship programs. Thank you, Mr. Bohannon, for already beginning those conversations. With finding some way to increase access to the Hillsdale Cow Train Station, I feel like I'm kind of agnostic about the method. And so I appreciate learning that you're, you've done some work on this. And as Councilmember Fierko Gudzinski mentioned, I think just collaborating with the city where possible and figuring out the best possible way to ensure we, we really do have many, many, many users of this project taking the train and/or other modes of transit. And for the record, right now, it is, it is tough right now, of course. Existing conditions are not great. And I'm hopeful that frankly, Cow Train might be interested in, in considering joining in on that, because I think it could be for their benefit as well. You know, I, I, oh, I do just want to also, you know, ask our, our neighbors and Samitans for understanding that there are some things the city can ask for and require, and some things that it will not be able to for this project. And I think for that which we can, we, we will do our best to see that this project is the best it can be for our city. I also ask for some open mindedness to the change that a, a project like this could bring to our city. Remembering that this is a project that will be coming in portions in our present, but also largely into our future and serving future needs and, and being a part of a future San Mateo that we've begun envisioning in our general plan. One in which I think we will see our landscape changing, our uses in our city changing. And we too will need to change with it at least a bit. And we're going to need to be open minded to ways in which we may consider how we can change with these future developments. Transportation is an example of that. You know, the Cow Train has improved its service significantly over the last year. The capacity has increased and Samtrans El Camino bus is the biggest route in Samtrans and it now runs about every 15 minutes and it's good. So I do just, you know, it's not a complete pipe dream. There have been improvements made. There are more improvements that need to be made to make this work. But I am, I am optimistic. I, I, I feel like this, frankly, I've, I've heard nothing but positive comments about the North Block to date. It's an activated space regularly that offers a lot. And I frankly think that is a good start to thinking about what this project could bring. And I think that this project can offer a lot as well. So I guess I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Fernandez.
Through the mayor, did you want to extend the meeting? Five minutes to 11?
Yeah. Can, can we extend the meeting until 11:45?
I'm supportive of that.
All right, I'm serious. I started this year with a goal of no two day meetings. We are going to be done at 11:45. Okay.
So our rules, just if I may, our rules require a vote at the council, requires a majority vote. So I heard a motion and a second, so if the council could then vote.
Okay. Can we get a vote, please? Deputy Clerk?
All righty. Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmembers for Gudzinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
No.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Okay, and one more thing. Can we also as a group agree that we are going to pull the item that we were going to leave on, which was item 15, and push that to another meeting?
It's been noted, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Fernandez, thank you.
Okay, I will be brief. So I want to thank everybody who stuck around tonight. This is obviously a very important issue and people are very passionate about it. We are, us as a council have a lot of thoughts. And so I just want to frame my comments and questions with a quote from Mr. David Bohannon that says, "We are committed to continuing our family's relationship with this property and its service to the San Mateo community as we have done for the past 75 years. And we will preserve that legacy and strengthen our ability to ensure Hillsdale can serve an even greater purpose for this community in the decades ahead. Hillsdale is not only my family's legacy, it's San Mateo's legacy as well." So I just wanted to start with that quote, because it's very obvious that you shape, your family has shaped San Mateo in many ways, but I truly believe San Mateo has shaped you as well. I want to make sure that I note that you acknowledge that your family's history with redlining has made, has been challenging and you've taken the initiative to commit time and money to support causes within San Mateo that promote equity, including PAL, our school foundation and other causes. I just want to make sure that I call that out from here. So that kind of is setting the, setting my, my, my level setting for my questions. Can you explain why the number of units were reduced?
Yeah, this is a little bit of a, I think an artificial perception of reduction because of the way that the applications were submitted. So when we submitted a pre preliminary application SB 330 app, we submitted with, I believe it was 1392 units.
And now it's been pulled back to 1,000, I think?
Then, I'm sorry, say again?
It's now at 13, but it was at 16 before?
Oh, so that was, that was our pre, our pre app was 1392. Then when we went in with our formal submission in June, we, we changed it to basically a range or maximum build out envelope. And so that contemplated, for example, the S2 parcel or the C5 parcel having that flexibility. So the way we presented the master plan was there's an overall maximum cap, but then there were ranges within the residential or office that could toggle and move. And so that was showing the maximum build out potentially of residential. And then when we were directed to complete the specifics of a, the application checklist on our resubmission where we needed concrete, no pun intended, they're not necessarily concrete buildings, but clear, you know, detailed buildings, we reverted back to basically, okay, let's, let's actually put the buildings in place as currently were proposed, which were really reflected in the pre app. So the 1670 was always an up to 1670 inherently having flexibility in the master plan for the plan to, Vice Mayor Lorraine's point of being able to have flexibility for the site to evolve over time, potentially for one or two of the other office buildings to flex into residential use, for example.
So it could potentially, the number of units, including affordable units, could go up?
Correct.
If that.
Exactly. But we, but we, we felt we needed to give a firm defined
Yeah.
account for this resubmission.
That makes sense. Going back to the comment that I made before, I know that Mr. Bohannon and your company commit and make, in, are strive to make San Mateo a better place with this project. And I think that a core part of that is making sure that the folks who live here can work on this project. My understanding is that maybe you guys have been in touch, maybe you haven't, have, have you been in touch with the building trades with regards to this item?
Yeah, so we've, we've started to engage with them and I know David touched on this earlier, I won't, I won't call him back up for this, but we have started to, we have planned to continue an ongoing dialogue. We're in the process of scheduling meetings. We just talked to some of the folks who were in here earlier, a few days ago before the meeting, and setting up some meetings in the coming, coming month.
At what point in the timeline can you commit to utilizing Labor Council and Building Trades and carpenters?
I think it's going to be
Services.
An ongoing conversation with the representatives in the near term. First, we need to just kind of engage with them in a little bit more of a consistent way right now, coming up before we can definitively confirm that one way or the other.
Okay, because what makes San Mateo better is when we have economic diversity and people can live and work where they, where they work, where they live and live where they work. And so I really encourage you to tap into that, tap into that. Is there a commitment to maintaining a police substation at the new development?
Yeah, so there's a, as you know, there's a police substation in the current, current project. We didn't want to 100% commit to it because we haven't talked with the police department and we want to understand what their needs are, what their interest is and stuff like that. But what I can commit to is we are planning on meeting with them in the coming month or two. We are going to reach out to them to have a conversation about it and we are very open to the idea of it.
Okay. And with regards to the affordable and low income units that you are going to have on site, what is, will, will there be, will it be fully, will, what was the term that they used? The housing that was, that provides assistance and you have all of that is supportive?
Oh.
It's late, my brain is walking away.
I get it.
Where, where are we on providing the support, the support of promising or, or committing to supportive, supportive housing?
So we, we have not made any commitments at this point to supportive housing. That is a, a, a different level of both affordability potentially, but also in terms of just the services that go in conjunction with it. What we've, what we've committed to at this point is the 15% low income in the rental units and then 15% moderate income restricted in the for sale units.
We'd really like to see a commitment to supportive sooner than later, if, if we can request that. I think that's a really important topic. So those are all my questions. I just want to make sure that everybody in the audience, whether you're on Zoom right now or you've been sitting here, with this being an SB 330 application, our hands are tied in a lot of the things that we can ask you for. The only thing that we can ask you to do is be a good partner and be a good neighbor. And you've shown us that in the past and, and I look forward to continuing that in, in working to making sure that this is a project that will benefit our whole community. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, are you still standing?
I am.
Good.
My voice maybe not, but my body is.
Then you and I can sound the same.
Exactly.
There we go, we're fine. So anyhow, thank you to everyone. I will not go through all of this. Thank you to my council members, fellow council members for asking all the questions. I came away with a lot of optimism based on what I heard. I've heard we're going to finish the project by 2040. We're going to phase housing early where possible. We want, we are absolutely committed to this being a regional draw, which is good for everyone, that we are committed to a safe El Camino crossing that will encourage more multimodal transportation and that we will continue to talk and that this SB 330 or anything soon is not the end of the project. It is a phase in the project, but there's a lot more discussion, that we're committed to making this an economic impact that is positive for the city, long term and not just a transaction. So I think that's a lot of great detail. I think what this project needs, which is partially at the phase of where it is, is we all need a lot more detail. You need a lot more detail, we need a lot more detail, the community needs a lot more detail. And that's, that's fair, but I think we've all got to stay focused on that. And as Ms. Sahay said at the beginning, this is one of the biggest projects in San Mateo. But I would also, you know, we need commitment, we need transparency and real data. And I think that's something all of us can agree on. And that's something where you can, we have to live by objective design standards and objective standards, but real data can take temperatures down, can foster solutions. And I would really encourage all of us to just talk in real numbers and what we can and cannot do whenever possible. I also would like to encourage the community, I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Fernandez, that life is different now in terms of regulation and what we can do versus Bay Meadows. But what we have now, which all of us realize, we have community and the community is our superpower. And so I would encourage the community to get engaged, to stay educated, to find out what's going on and to give us opinions all the way through, because together, we're going to come up with solutions. And you want a successful project, the community does, the community is going to understand things you don't know, because you are not living in the community. So I would really encourage that connection. I think there's been a lot of very good community interaction and I am so glad that we want to continue it. I know there was a suggestion raised in the, the press maybe a week ago or so about the possibility of having an ongoing small residential advisory group, just to have someone you can go to, just like you've done with the residents on Edison, but to go through and say, here's an issue, how do we deal with it? What are your suggestions? Help us communicate to the rest of the residents, get feedback for you from the residents. Cause community engagement is how anything has been successful anywhere in the world. We just happen to be one example of it. And I know, you know, certainly the Bohannon family believes in that. I know you believe in that. I certainly know that the residents believe in it and the small businesses. So we're all going to go through a lot of difficult times with this and how do we deal with displacement? What are things we can do to support our small businesses? What can we do to reduce noise pollution, construction mitigation? Just keep engaging with the community. So specifically that small resident advisory group, I think there's a lot of support on the council for doing that. So I think that's just real important. And then, let's see if there's anything else. I know we had talked about doing, continuing workshops going on, theme based workshops. I think that's a really great idea on your part, so the community can focus in on one issue at a time and not just have lots of ad hoc, you know, comments coming. And it also gives you an opportunity to show that you understand what the community needs are and how you're going to specifically address them, rather than trying to answer 100 questions in one session. You know, I completely support what everyone is saying about having labor be a real partner in this. I particularly appreciate the value that the apprenticeship programs bring, because this is going to be a long project. You know, 10 years, 11 years, that is generations. And we need to be able to commit right now so that as Labor said, they can open up more apprenticeship opportunities, so that you get the quality that you deserve and that the community deserves. And I'd love to be able to get to a point where the project can commit to it being predominantly a union labor project. I know there will always be little discussions here and there, but making a commitment publicly that this will be a predominant labor project, I think is very important. I think it's also great tonight that you brought in Northwood. And I would encourage you to continue to have the Northwood representatives engage with the community, engage with the council, so that everyone understands that this potentially could, you know, certainly as a private equity firm and profitability is obviously a top priority, but also the expertise that Northwood brings and can bring to this project. So the more we get down to the detail and what this all means, the better. And then finally, because I'm also always the person who talks about design and, and things, I just want to really encourage the public to look at, we have photorealistic renderings right now. It's not the end of the story and they could wind up looking very differently, but it's much more that you can react to. So I would encourage the public to take a look at that and also encourage you to continue whenever there are changes, to bring those forward, even if they're not fully baked. Because people are going to look at those slides and say, oh, that's what it's going to look like. And it may or may not look like that, but we owe it to the community to be able to say, here are changes, but here's what's exciting. I would encourage you to really focus as much as possible, as you've heard tonight from the community and our fellow council members, in terms of, of really building out what El Camino and the commercial buildings are going to look like. Lots of changes perhaps. and the commercial buildings are going to look like. Lots of changes perhaps, but the more we can get a more realistic rendition, the more it's going to give people something to react to, which will be helpful to all. And then also, I think there's been great progress made on the Edison side, but there's a lot more that can be done. So just really engaging and doing that. And this should be something we're all committed to as being a great example of urban design. I mean, this is, as many people have said, we are here, we are going forward. This is going to be here in hopefully many more than 40 years. So how can this be something that wins awards all over the world for design and community engagement and how it works for everyone within the complex as well as the community and the city as a whole? So I would love that to be something, obviously encouraging the number of affordable units and lowering the level of affordability is important as well. But just help us understand what this all means in real life beyond the renditions and work with us, work with the community. And we'll try and do our best to work with you. And we're not always easy, but we have the heart of everyone in mind. So with that, I will turn it over to the neighbor, to my neighbor to the right, the mayor of San Mateo.
It's a wonderful day in the neighborhood. Okay. I'm going to spitball things at you that are both thoughts and questions because I want to get through this as quickly as possible. And a lot of this has already been covered, so I'm trying to just pick the nuggets that maybe haven't been. One suggestion, both through the construction phase and the initial, initial as offices start to move in to your commercial space, would be to help fund commute.org. Commute.org already serves a lot at the Hillsdale Station, but it would be great to have these union labor employees coming off the train and taking shuttle across the street if they can't necessarily walk. It would be great to, as offices move into your commercial space, encourage them to use the shuttle service. And that's in lieu of the fact that maybe we can't, or maybe it's not practical to build a pedestrian or bike bridge, but anything you can do to help make it safer and more accessible to the train station, we all encourage. You've talked a lot about phasing. I, in my district, I represent Bay Meadows. And one of the things that pains me literally every week is driving through and seeing two city blocks that are still vacant almost 20 years on. And so I encourage you to please plan responsibly. And also, I like what I saw with the phasing, but make sure that we're not tearing down something before we have something in place to replace it. With that, in a similar vein, the Passage Project, which is off Concar, also in my district, has a Trader Joe's. And although it's changed, they're not moving the Trader Joe's. They had committed to, before tearing down the Trader Joe's in its existing place, building a new location. I would strongly encourage you, especially if you're keeping Trader Joe's, to try to look for an opportunity like that where, before you go and knock out a Trader Joe's and we don't have a grocery store there for two years, we build the new grocery store in a location and then we can knock down the old and we'll be back up in a week. So please look at that. I like what I heard about continuing beyond SB 330. Obviously, the city, as we've said, doesn't have any way to enforce that, but I really strongly hope that you will be a good partner in that respect. Trying to go fast. As you have, well, one question, flagship stores, or department stores, is there an interest from any of them to stay in this development?
Yeah. In terms of the flagship, it's hard to say whether they'll want to stay in a different capacity. You know, the example I always give is Nordstrom's closed in San Francisco last year. They just opened a 2,500 square foot kind of sales room, showroom, now in Fillmore, different format. So potentially in some capacity like that. I think what we're looking at though is what are the next generation of quote unquote anchors that may not look the same as the anchors of the last 50 years, but they're really a draw. And the example that's easy to point to, because I think it's very tangible here, is the Apple Store in the North Block does a tremendous amount of volume and actually outperforms in their 5,000 square foot, several hundred thousand square feet of equivalent space in aspects of the Central Mall. And so I think it's thinking of what are those types of anchors that are still regional draws, but maybe don't have the traditional department store anchor label?
Absolutely. There's also a lot of small business in the mall. In fact, I did my walk-through over the weekend and was looking at the hundreds of merchants that are there currently. And we have three kind of corridors in San Mateo, well, four if you include Bridgepoint. We've got Bridgepoint, we've got Downtown San Mateo, we have 25th and 42nd corridors. And a lot of them have room. And so, you know, what I'd also encourage, if you can help us, is that if some of these are not going to continue to stay in what is the Hillsdale Mall in its new configuration, help us work with our Chamber of Commerce to find them homes locally. Because we need, we need, we need and want to retain this retail. A lot of people are concerned because a large amount of the sales tax revenue for the city of San Mateo comes from the Hillsdale Mall. And so, you know, the city is struggling a lot right now, as are all cities in California. And the loss of a big piece of our tax base from sales tax is very disconcerting as we have three rec centers that need to be replaced. We have two commercial pools that need, or two public pools that need to be replaced. We have a lot of infrastructure challenges. And I don't discredit the fact that, you know, the law allows you to not have to give back to the city anymore. That's the state law and that's not, you know, not anything that I fault you for taking advantage of. But I do ask that, you know, you really keep an eye towards what could we do to give back? And I think, I believe that the Bohannans' history in the city and their partnership with the city shows their commitment to doing that. But I ask again, you know, anything you guys can do to help us with that, we will be appreciative of. And it'll shine on just what a great partner you are. Jumping on. I think that there's been a lot of concern about the loss of jobs. But as I hear about the phasing, maybe that isn't as impacted as we are, as we were worried about it being. But, you know, another plug, like, we want to make sure we're using local labor. We want to make sure you're using union labor because a project that's going to scale 10 or 15 years is going to give a lot of people opportunity to grow within their jobs and be able to work local. So anything you can do to help us with that will be appreciated. I sit on the fireboard for the city of San Mateo, and we actually have a consolidated fire, San Mateo, Belmont, Foster City, you know the drill. I do strongly encourage that we get them involved early. There's some current concerns with the current layout of the mall as far as accessibility for fire trucks, ambulances, EMT, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that we don't build with, you know, with gaps, like, gosh, that's a horrible design from trying to get a fire truck, you know, accessible, accessible to one of the buildings. And if we're going to be building taller buildings, then, you know, we have to look at, is the station closest to you, just to the north, going to be able to support it? Or are we going to need help with maybe another truck or maybe another substation? And, you know, I look across the street and the east side of the street, which is also owned by Mr. Bohannon, which I understand is not part of this project, is also in my district. And I look at it and think, well, if you want, we can put a substation there right now. You know, like, we could start building now. So anything you can do to help make sure that we're building and we're building it safely and we're building it right is important to the entire community. Along those lines, again, looking at the circulation, making sure the trucks can get through. And I'm assuming that's going to have an impact as well when you look at, you know, I think most of them, most deliveries come in the underground tunnel. I don't know what happens when the underground tunnel goes away, but make sure we're thinking this all through. Make sure we're coming to the city's Consolidated Fire Department and the city to make sure that the plan is effective and right. I think I already talked about this. You know, I see and I really appreciate all the outdoor space and the kind of public community space. One thing that we have in Bay Meadows, which we don't have here, is that we have a park that is a city park that the development built. Even if we don't have that in this situation, I hope that with the community space that's built, that we are given access to be able to park and wreck, to do activities and exercises there, have events there, and not have it be, you know, this is only driven by the Bohannon Corporation. It's, hey, this is a public space that the city can bring in, park and wreck and do. And ultimately, that's just a win for you. I can promise you that as opposed to anything else. And then the last one was, you know, I know there might be limitations to childcare on site, but with a development this big and as many offices as we're putting there, trying to find something, even if it's just in the neighborhood, that could serve that, that need would be a fantastic thing. So I've gone really fast. I hope, do you have any questions about my feedback?
No, very, very, very clearly conveyed. Thank you.
I guess the last thing would be just to continue to ask you to partner with us. As I've said, and it's been said over and over, you know, the city doesn't have the same ability to require you to do things. But I look to you guys to be in good partners with us and make sure that we get as many community benefits as we can to both benefit the work, people who work and live in this new development that you're building. So that's all I have. I really appreciate everybody staying so late and I appreciate everyone coming out for public comment today. So thank you very much.
So I want to thank all of you very much for all your thoughtful questions and input. We certainly appreciate and value our relationship with the city of San Mateo and expect to continue to work and talk through all the issues that will make this project successful. And as to the partnership outside the bounds of SB 330 and what we're required or not required to do, we will continue to talk to the city about those things. It's early.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Okay. We now go to, we're skipping 14 and 15, and we go to the reports and announcements. I'm right, right? Reports and announcements, which is the ending of our meeting. Before we begin with the council's reports and announcements, I'd like to invite our city manager to share a few remarks regarding our legislative committee meeting that took place on Monday, October 27.
So as part of the city's policy, we need to report out the council, the ad hoc committee, Legislative Ad hoc Committee comprised of the mayor and the deputy mayor met last Monday, discussed legislative updates regarding this past legislative cycle at the state level and received updates from our legislative consultant. They also received an update on Proposition 50, which will, you know, go out and vote tomorrow. And then also discussed the legislative platform and provided some refinements that staff will be bringing in the near future to the council in early January. And with that, we have met the obligation per the council's policy to provide an update to the council at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Reports and announcements. Does anybody have any?
Just one quick. There is, I've been invited, and I think maybe other members have as well, to the San Mateo County Events Center for more discussion about the plans and the strategic development that's going on as to what the Event Center should be in the future and making it more of a convention center, event center, entertainment center. And they are looking for a local representation. I just wanted to put out that I would very much like to be involved on that committee as a San Mateo representative and make everyone else aware of that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure we have nodding heads, majority. Okay? Yeah. I told Lisa I'd also like to participate in that. Maybe not, maybe I can be her backup or secondary, just because I don't have as much time to dedicate, but it is right in the heart of my district and I've been involved a lot with that. So
I think that's great.
Thank you. I'd like to partner with you.
We'll figure it out.
All right. Everybody, nodding heads? Good. All right. Any other events that we need to talk about that are coming up? I know this weekend we have the letter campaign, the Letter and Package Gift Can Campaign on Sunday. Can you give us an update on that, council member?
Absolutely. This Sunday, November 9, 2:30 PM, if you're interested in sending care packages or writing letters for the 101st Airborne, our unit, which is adopted by the city of San Mateo, we have a care package packing day. Shout out to Martin McTaggart, our city clerk, and Mitch Spiegel, who have really led the charge on that effort. So thank you. Open to all council members.
Yeah, just looking at the calendar, the only other thing I see this week, I'm probably missing some other things, is that we have the San Mateo Garden Center's 50th anniversary at 5 o'clock on Wednesday, the 5th. Anything else? I think that's about it. The last thing would be to, everybody who's, oh yeah, please.
Just real quick, I did attend Peninsula Clean Energy's board meeting in between the last time I think I at least saw you folks. And I did just want to share something that you might find interesting, among other things. Firstly, you know, a really consequential step toward a new five-year strategic plan with new ambitious goals that I will not, I'll spare you right now. But
Thank you.
One aesthetic interesting thing is there's been a move to change the name of the organization. And the winning choice was Westlight Energy. So you may see at some point a change. I think next year, it won't be happening quite immediately. It'll be sort of announced and launched in a campaign that sort of parallels a 10-year anniversary next year of PCE being JP that serves us, Clean Green Energy. But Westlight Energy, the power of we. W, Westlight and Energy, the power of we.
Okay. Thank you. This weekend, I attended the rescheduled Tonga Day. That event was incredible. And we're hopeful that next year, maybe in its second iteration, we will be able to have it in the city of San Mateo. Also went to the Humane Society. They had a fantastic gala and raised over $300,000 for our local humane societies. So all in all, great weekend. And we're doing great things here in the city of San Mateo. The last thing I would say before we close is that tomorrow is the last day to vote. So if you haven't voted, please get your votes, get your ballots in now. Vote early, vote often. Okay. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.